All right, I have 6:30. Are you guys ready to go? Maybe I'll just shut that door. Okay. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Courier. This is the Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment. If you're here for the Board of Aldermen, that starts in the second floor below us. I serve as the chairman, I serve you as the chairman of the zoning board of adjustment. And before we get going on the cases, I'll just walk through our rules and regulations. First, I'd like to introduce the other members of the board. To my right, to your left, is Mr. J. P. Boucher. He serves as our vice chair, and he's also our clerk tonight. And continuing around, we have Mr. James Welch, or Jay Welch, who's new to our board, and I thank him for stepping up and volunteering. He was just appointed by the Board of Aldermen a few months ago. And by the way, we get here by first expressing an interest. We're appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the Board of Aldermen. Continuing on, we have Ms. Kathy Vitale, who's an alternate member. So the four of us will likely be voting on all the cases tonight. To my left is Mr. Carter Falk. He's our deputy planning manager, and he works in the city planning department. First, if anybody has a cellphone, I ask that you put it on vibrate or turn off, and I'm gonna make sure I've done so on mine, which I have. This meeting is recorded in three venues. It's first, it's televised, so there is a camera running, and it'll be televised later this week on Nashua Public Access Channel. It's also being recorded audio, and in a few days, you'll be able to stream it, if you wish, on the NashuaNewHampshire.gov website. And there's also, will be, a written transcript of the meeting tonight, which is actually the official record. So I ask that only one person is speaking at a time. I hope to control the conversation, so we only have one person speaking at a time. And whoever is speaking needs to speak into a microphone. So any testimony from folks in the audience tonight will need to be done at that microphone. If it's not, again, if we're not speaking in the microphone, it won't get picked up for the record. Tonight, the meeting, each case consists of two components. The first component is the public hearing, and the second component is the public meeting. And the public hearing, the first component, is where we hear from you on each case tonight. And there's a specific order that the testimony is heard. First, the applicant will speak. The applicant will have up to 15 minutes to make their points of law. We have a timer here that'll count down from 15 minutes. It'll be green for the first 14, yellow from minute 14 to 15, and then red. If you're still speaking, I'll be asking you to stop. After the applicant has spoken in favor of the application, anybody else who has testimony in favor of the application will then have up to five minutes to present their testimony. After all positive testimony is heard, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposing testimony will then have up to five minutes to present their opposition. If there is opposition to an application, then the applicant, after all opposition has spoken, then the applicant will have up to five minutes to address that opposition. And after the applicant has spoken, one and only one person who has spoken in opposition will then have the final five minutes to address what the applicant says. At that point, the public hearing terminates or ends, and the public meeting begins. And the public meeting is where the four of us will deliberate on the case and likely come to a conclusion. And three or more affirmative votes are needed to grant a variance or a special exception. So let me speak just for a minute about what the criteria is. And I'll put on my reading glasses. So for a variance, by state law, there's five criteria that this board needs to hear. I'll briefly tick through the five criteria. Number one is that the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Number two is that the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Number three is that substantial justice is done. Number four of five is that the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. And number five is that literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. So that's the five criteria that by state law, this or any board, zoning board in the state of New Hampshire, needs to hear in order to grant a variance. And a variance is a deviation from this thick book of zoning, which this board doesn't create. That's created by the Aldermen ultimately and the mayor. And so we're here tonight to hear about deviations from this book. There's another type of deviation, other than a variance, and it's called a special exception. That's slightly different than a variance. And I'll briefly say what the five criteria for a special exception is. First is that the requested use or activity is listed in the Nashua, City of Nashua zoning ordinance, Table 15-1. So a special exception is a use that is permitted, but only if it meets a criteria. And the second criteria is that the requested use and activity will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Number three of five is that the requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system, or any other municipal system. Number four is that any special regulations for the use or activity set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled. And that might be in the case of wetlands, or a home-child care situation. And the fifth is the requested use or activity will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood. So that is the five criteria that this board needs to hear to grant a special exception. Tonight, we have a long agenda. If anybody doesn't have it already, copies of the agenda are on that table over on that wall. Feel free to hop up and grab a copy of the agenda. There's two important points I'd like to say right now, and that is the first case, which is 24 Barnesdale Road, which is a fence in Ward 9. That case has been withdrawn. So if there's anybody here for 24 Barnesdale Road, the applicant has withdrawn the request. And case number three, White Family Adventures, which is 2 and 4 Henry David Drive. It's off Northeastern Boulevard. That has been postponed to the next meeting, which is September 22. So case one is gone. Case three is postponed. If you're here for those two, you're welcome to stay, but there's gonna be no action on those cases tonight. A few other points I'd like to say is that we are likely to render a decision, which is either gonna be affirmative, negative, or perhaps a table. A table maybe to a later date, for whatever reason, maybe if we need more information. If any party of standing disagrees with whatever decision we have, you have the right to file a rehearing request. That would be the next step. So if you're interested in doing a rehearing request after whatever decision is rendered tonight, you could give Mr. Falk a call tomorrow, or look on the website for some instructions on how to file a rehearing request. And this is kind of important, because any party of standing can file a rehearing request for up to 30 days. If we receive a rehearing request, and we decide to rehear it, then whatever decision we came to is stayed. So if we give an approval for something, I'll be giving the warning that 29 days later, 30 days later, that approval could be stayed if we receive a rehearing request and decide to rehear it. Sir, can you hear me okay? Because it looks like you're struggling to hear me. Okay, let me pull this a little closer. And I might be booming, but hopefully you can hear me better. And then if you've submitted a rehearing request, and we decide not to rehear it, your next step would be to appeal your case to New Hampshire Superior Court. Just gonna briefly look through. One other point I'd like to make is the five criteria that I spoke about. That is what this board, by law, decides on cases on. I ask that you keep your testimony focused on that five criteria. If it is not within that five criteria, it is likely that I might ask you to stay to the criteria, because we can't consider a criteria other than the five criteria. And if we're hearing it, I'd rather us not hear it, because somebody else might argue, "Well, Mr. Courier let them go on with non-criteria, so maybe it did influence us." So I'm gonna ask that you stick to the five criteria. Before we get going, are there any questions anyone has in the audience? Seeing none. All right, well, why don't we, are you guys? Okay, let me just, I know that none of that's getting picked up, but I know what you're asking. I'm gonna repeat your question. You were asking me to repeat how the testimony is provided. And the testimony is provided in this. The applicant speaks first for up to 15 minutes. Then anybody else in favor of the application has up to five minutes to speak. After all favorable testimony is heard, then anyone with questions, concerns, or opposition has up to five minutes at the microphone to present their case. If there is opposition to an application, then the applicant will come, has the right to come back to the microphone for up to five minutes to address the opposition. And then after the applicant has addressed the opposition, one and only one person who has spoken in opposition has up to five minutes to address the applicant's testimony that was just provided. Okay. Are there any other questions? All right, thanks for your question. Are you guys ready to get going? All right. Why don't we get going? Again, case number one has been withdrawn. So we're gonna move right on to case number two, which is Meckel Properties is the owner. The address is 129 East Dunstable Road. The request is a use variance to convert the use from a vacant building formerly occupied by a real estate office to a drop-off location for a dry cleaner. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 9. Hi, good evening. Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jerry Pruney. I'm an attorney with offices at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashua, and I'm here representing the applicant this evening. Before I start, I'd like to note my objection to proceeding with the full-member board, not a full-member board, but according to the ordinance, excuse me, I will continue with my presentation.
So noted. You know what, while you wanna keep, I'll pull that microphone a little bit closer, because I think we can. And maybe if you could just--
How about now? Thank you. Did we get for the record the fact of my objection to proceeding without a full board?
That is on the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This piece of property is located at 129 East Dunstable Road. And knowing the board's procedure, all of you have probably have seen it and visited. I know you have. This was previously, a variance was granted to use it for office space. And it's been used for various office space for realtor and others up till about a year ago, when it became vacant. This piece of property is located on the west side of East Dunstable Road. It's a triangular piece of property, a single building on it. It's ordered on the west by Salmon Brook, which is close by to the rear of the building, and has about a 20-plus-foot drop-off into the river, according to the topo with the maps that were presented. It also is a problem with the configuration as far as being the wedge-type property. That part of the property going towards the south would be, is very difficult, impossible to develop, because it can't meet the side--
If you go over there, maybe you might wanna pull the microphone off and just keep it there. Thank you very much.
Part of the side of the triangle piece could meet the requirements, and also it's closer to the river, which meets with the wetland ordinances that have been passed by the city of Nashua. And it also is subject to a power line easement along that way. It has a bank next door, has single-family homes across the street, has a drugstore over here, and a bank here, and the shell station in that regard. So the area has some commercial use, which is much more intense than what is being proposed. What is being proposed is a drop-off for cleaners. There will be no work other than picking the clothes up or dropping it off in this location. The factory, the plant that takes care of the cleaning and so forth is located on Progress Avenue in Nashua, and not in this location. So there'll be no, other than dropping off. There'll be one employee that will take care of the drop-off. And the property will be open on weekdays from 7:00 to 7:00, and on Saturdays, 7:00 to 4:00. The hardship, as I have indicated, is special conditions that indicate, that use this piece of property, the river, the Salmon Brook, excuse me, and the easement for the public service company, as well as the fact of the configurations and topography of the property itself. There's not gonna be any diminution of value. Maybe, Mr. Chairman, you can present you with a letter that says that.
Sure. Is there one copy there, or five? You could leave it with Ms. Vitale, and she'll look at it and pass it around.
The drop-off center will serve its present customers. It is already located across the street. It's just moving back to a piece of property that it owns. There's not gonna be any increase in traffic. It's for the local traffic. No one's gonna come from Amherst Street to drop off their clothes at this particular place. And as I indicated, the spirit and tenet of the ordinance, it's almost like a split zone at this particular thing with commercial property located on the other side. At this point in time, I'd be glad to answer any questions that the board may have.
All right. I see Ms. Vitale's hand is already in the air. You wanna kick it off, Ms. Vitale?
You were, this house was just previously rented, wasn't it?
Ms. Vitale, could I ask you to pull the microphone a little closer?
My voice doesn't carry you anyhow.
It was rented for a short term during the past year. But prior to that term, it was used by Angie Kopka as a real estate office. It was used by my client as office space, which was allowed. That's what the variance was granted for. And then recently by one tenant that stayed there for a short period of time.
Yeah, because I'm friends with the, I know the tenant. That was why I, she's moved out. But, so where the driveway is, where it swings around, the right side, the side closest to the bank, is actually the bank property?
No.
Is that--
As the planning board does, requests that properties have transitions from side to side. There was one here, but it doesn't really apply anymore, because it's just with that piece of property.
And because right now, it's really, it's a house on the inside, for all intents and purposes.
Correct.
Have they looked to rent it again? Or, you know, it has a walkout basement, you know, it's a full house? Have they?
They've looked at, it's more of a commercial property, and that's what they want to use it for. It has been granted a variance. The variance criteria has been established and found by the board. This is even less than what the variance criteria was before.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Boucher? I have a question. I guess from being familiar with that area, I guess it's more of a concern--
You go by it a couple of times a day, don't you?
Yeah, I do. I live pretty close to it. But I find a distinct difference between the location of a business on the other side, if you wanna call it the easterly side, or southerly side--
Easterly side.
Versus the location of this property. Because on the location of this property, have two lanes necking down into one. And so for anybody exiting this property, if you're heading up the hill to Spitbrook Road, that's fine. But to go over to Timberline, or to get back towards exit 4, it's very challenging. And I say that from the demonstration of the bank business. When cars pull out of the bank business, I find it very dangerous for those cars making a left-hand turn. So I'm concerned about that. And it's interesting, because the variance was first granted, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the minutes from-- because I'd like to read one sentence here. It said, "Mr. Turner noted that in the planning staff report, they point out that the use next door are light retail uses," which is, I think, what you're saying. "He assumed they came up with that by standing and watching people dropping off their laundry every 15 minutes, or beauty parlor appointments every half hour, but he wouldn't call that light retail, because it is quite intense." I guess my point is, that excerpt is when the variance was granted for the use that it currently had, the real estate. The testimony right behind that says, "Not many business transactions would be conducted at the office. Only half of them would, because they'd be at the other realtor's office. That would be the expectation." So the testimony then for the variance being granted was very light use, hardly any traffic. I see the use of this drop-off as being very intense. And when the drop-off, which is currently being done across the street, it's much easier, because you have to turn right. And you can also make a left, and with the light right next to it, when it's red, it's easier to get out. So I guess I'm probably going on a little too long, saying, "I'm struggling in that this proposed business, I find to be much more intense use than the real estate." And I think the location on that side of the street, where two lanes are going down to one, is very challenging, and I'm uncomfortable with that situation.
Well, all I can say to that is that it may be intense for a little while in the morning, with people dropping off, but the rest of the day, it'd be sporadic as to when they drop it off, and maybe picking it up at night. But on the other side, you have to do the same thing. If you were taking a left out of there, trying to come back, you still have the problem. Even though you have a light, you still have the problem. On this particular area, I have to disagree with you on the bank, because I represent the bank, and I go there very often. I never have a problem taking a left out of there, ever. I may have to wait a second for a car to go by, but the light already blocks it with, for Harris Road, for the light to Harris Road. So it stops the car, so it stops the circulation. So I have to disagree with you, Mr. Chairman, as to that particular thing. You can take a left.
Mm-hmm. Okay, just a point I'd like to make. I clarify that, yeah, during the middle of the day, I think traffic generally at exit 4 isn't that heavy. But from about 6:45 to about 8:45, I find is the bulk of the use of, you know, it's very busy there, and it's also very busy at the drop-off. It's like folks like me seem to use it when I'm on my way to work, or home from work. So I just wanna clarify my statements, that at the rush hours, I find that intersection to be congested, and that's where the exiting from that side is very difficult. But that's, but I agree, at the off-hours, it's a non-issue, certainly. But anyway, that's just where I'm at on it at the moment. And I guess that's it for any, are there any other questions for the applicant? I think we're all set. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Hi, ma'am, if you could come up and give us your name and address?
Hello, my name is Joan Meckel, and I'm the owner of the property at 129 East Dunstable. I would like to address the real estate office that used to be there, and the minutes that stated that it was gonna be low-impact people in a real estate office. Angie used to run a school there. There used to be 20, 30, 40 people coming into classes in that place, and there was never an issue in that little building. And as far as people dropping off and picking up, from what we see that goes on, people will drop off and pick up at their convenience. So in the morning, when they're going out, they're not gonna cross over and go to that store. They're gonna come on their way back home. They're gonna run in, drop off, or pick up, and then continue home. That's what we see on the opposite side of the street. We're already there. We're not increasing traffic. We're simply going from one side to the other. So that's all I have to say. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Merkel?
I actually have a question.
Yes.
When you say she had classes, I'm assuming that's real estate classes?
Correct.
And how often did she have those? I don't remember her having those. I was just wondering, were those daily, maybe on Saturdays?
She, sometimes they ran five nights a week. They would start at 5:00 o'clock at night. Sometimes she'd run them on a Saturday. She'd do an eight-hour class on Saturdays. But they, she had a lot of classes running in there.
I'm just wondering, with 20 to 30 folks, that's 20 to 30 cars. I gotta say, I've never seen that more than four or five parked there.
They used to park in that parking lot where the building is, in the parking lot next door.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for that testimony.
You're welcome.
Just make, let me check. Any other questions? I think we're all set, so thank you. You can have a seat. Was anybody else speaking in favor of this proposed use at 129 East Dunstable? Anybody with questions or concerns? If you'd like to come up to the microphone, sir, and give us your name and address, and if you're, the spelling of your name isn't obvious to me, I'll ask you to spell it, so we get the record right. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, guys. My name's Alan Gilinas. I live at 140 East Dunstable Road.
Hi, welcome.
Welcome. I was just, the classes that were held by Kopka Realtor, that had to be 15 years ago. Apparently, the neighborhood's changed since then. So that was my only question, is how long ago were those classes?
Well, I guess, oh, one other point, Mr. Gilinas, is that?
Gilinas.
I asked, our other rule, which I failed to mention, is if you could address all questions to us versus the applicant. It's a great question you have, and we will have Mr. Pruney or the other person ask that, which was to clarify, if I got this right, when those classes were.
Correct.
Yeah, well, thank you. Did you have any other testimony? Any questions for Mr. Gilinas? All right, you can have a seat. Thanks for coming tonight. Was there anybody else with questions or concerns about? I see another hand in. If you'd like to come up to the microphone. And while this fellow's making his way up, is there anybody else who's gonna be testifying? I'm just trying to get a feel. We have this fellow, two fellows, and a lady, woman in the back. All right. Hi, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bill Daly. I live at 1 Judith Drive, just up the street from where the proposal is said to take place. And I need to concur with you, Mr. Chairman. The traffic patent, crossing several lanes to take a left to go continue up East Dunstable Road, is very hazardous. And I've heard testimony that you can pull out of the bank and wait a moment. It's no big deal. But again, in concurrence of this board, where the traffic is heaviest is at 6:45 to 8:45, including school traffic going into Bishop Gerton. And if someone's gonna drop off and run out, people are typically in a hurry that time of the morning. So to try to come out of the proposed area to make a left-hand turn can really be hazardous. On the other hand, and the reason I'm up here speaking this evening, if they don't wanna buck the traffic, and they take a right to continue up East Dunstable Road, the first street they'll turn into to make a U-turn will be at 1 Judith Drive in my driveway. I have no less than 50 cars a day turn around in my driveway already, because someone has missed Timberline-- because someone has missed Timberline Drive. So, one, it's a hazard, I feel, trying to take a left-hand turn during the busy hours. And we only talked about the 6:45 to 8:45 a.m., what about the rush hour traffic? At the end of the day, we get the same occurrence, or a very similar occurrence. I do agree that midday traffic might be lighter, but people are going to drop off and pick up, just think about when you do drop-offs and pickups. That's when I do them, early in the morning, pick up in the afternoon if I can. And to come back out of that property and want to make a left-hand turn is a hazard. To come out of that property, to continue up East Dunstable, to make a U-turn someplace, can also be hazardous, and an impact to the neighborhood as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Daly. Are there any questions for Mr. Daly? Well, thanks for coming tonight.
Not one question.
Not one question. All right, we have some other hands. There's a woman back there. If you'd like to come up and give us your name and address, and let us know what's on your mind. And I think this fellow had something to say, and I, was there anybody else besides this fellow in the front? Oh, there's another woman back there, okay. Hi, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Croissantis Stamos, and I live at 136 East Dunstable Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. My family has lived at this address for plus sixty years. Has been owned by my family. The traffic pattern on East Dunstable Road has increased dramatically since Angie Copka had her real estate business there. There's not only more houses on East Dunstable Road towards Spitbrook, and there's more children that are on the street, and there's more people jogging, and there's more people walking their dogs, and there's more people missing Timberline Drive and using not only Judith Drive, but my driveway to turn around in. And I think that this is a hazard in our neighborhood to move that over. And that house has been rented, I don't see why it can't be rented again. There's also a couple of other things. They say drop, their business is open from 7:00 to 7:00. They also have a drop-off box, which is 24/7. So it's not just people coming in and dropping while they're open, they'll be coming in at closed hours also. And I think that's the major ones. I think other people have mentioned some of the other ones. But it's really concerning about the traffic pattern, the fact that those, that two lanes drop into one lane right where they're going to start with the opening, the entrance and exits from that building.
All right, thank you, Ms. Stamos. Is there any questions? Is that right, Stamos, S-T-A-M-U-S?
A.S.
A.S., all right. Thanks for coming tonight. Sir, would you like to make your way up here and let us know what's on your mind? If you want, I can bring a microphone to you. Would you like me to do that? All right. It starts, Mr. Falk's going to reset it at 5:00, when you start talking, so you get your full five minutes.
I have some pictures here I'd like to send out to you.
All right, maybe Ms. Vitale could, she'll come down and take them from you, so she can give them to us, it'll save you taking a walk up the stairs. And if you could give us your name and address for the record?
My name is Bradley Whitney. I live at 38 Fifeel Street in Nashua. My family's been in Nashua for eight generations. I ran a pharmacy at the local business district across the street at 120 East Dunstable. We own that district. It's undeveloped, but Mr. Meckel has rented that from us, and had a dry cleaner place there for nineteen years. I believe that the classes were held not at 129 East Dunstable, but I believe they were on, is that going down from 3:00? Oh, my God. Anyway, they had a place, a big place, a parking lot at the real estate office. They cannot establish one thing in this to satisfy your requirements.
You mean the five criteria?
The five criteria. They just can't do it. It's by comparison, they talk about the drop-off. There's hundreds of homes that have a problem with kids and traffic, and they have a fence. And the kids could be protected by a fence. Thousands of homes are on busy streets, thousands of homes are next to commercial places. They say it's at the ramp. It's not at the ramp, it's near the ramp with buildings between. It's not next to the highway, it's near the highway with buildings in between. So there's a lot of, thank you, and I'm kind of upset when they changed their application in the middle of the stream after the applications went out, because they didn't fill out number four, and it was my testimony, my letter to Hatta that told him about it, and he notified, and they filled it out afterwards. That's not right, and you should take that into consideration, because I was very upset with that. They didn't even fill out the application properly, and there's a lot of omissions. They never said, "There's a local business district that serves the neighborhood right across the street where we own." And I tell you, the traffic of people going two ways out of this, in and out of the bank, Timberline, this place here, the dry cleaner, you're going to need a traffic light there, and that's unwanted, it would be unneeded. Right now, as a residence, it's low-impact, and with a business there, you've got, he has hundreds of clothings inside the place. I've gone to his office, I never had to see him at 129 East Dunstable Road. They have a, his office is at Progress Avenue, upstairs over the factory. And I think that's, he might have said he had an office there, but I question that greatly. Certainly, any classes were held at the old location with, because she, they, they did not pack at 129 for any classes, there's not enough room. Also, the easement is no longer there, and the whole configuration of the parking would have to be changed. There's not five cars, there's only room for three legal-width parking spots. So I have a lot of problems with that. But they, the, what do I got, 27 seconds?
No, you've got a minute, that'll go yellow, so you have another minute when it ticks down, so keep going.
Anyway, there will be, we, oh, we had another, if they leave us, we've been asked, a competing local dry cleaner for years has wanted to come to our place if Meckel ever left. And just a month ago, he reiterated his desire to be there if Meckel ever left, our tenancy. After I got this notice, I called him up and said, "Would you be willing to come? If Meckel leaves, if he gets approval?" He said, "No." He says, "Because if we don't, if he's across the street from us, within sight, we would end up in a price war, and we would not be interested anymore if he's there." So what's going to happen is, I lose a tenant, and I can't get another dry cleaner, because nobody would want to put themselves in that position. So that's an imposition and a devaluation of our property, we lose rent. That's another hardship for us. The traffic, they're going to certainly turn around and reverse direction in our parking lot, so we've got big problems. What about the parking of the cars on the property all night, his delivery cars? Anybody remember when he had all, got junk truck there, made the neighborhood look like a?
I have to jump in here, and, you know, we're up to five minutes.
See a red light?
Yep, we've expired through five minutes, so just hang on a minute, because let me just ask, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Whitney? I guess I have a question. You had also provided an email, which came to us because it was provided to Mr. Falk as a matter of the case. Let me just give a date on it, because I, now that I see you're Bradley Whitney, we have an email here from you, it was sent Sunday, September 10th. So this, have you all had a chance to read this email? Yeah, so we've read this email, which you provided to us.
Oh, great, great.
Let me just ask Attorney Pruney, or have you had a chance to see this email?
Yes, I have.
Oh, okay, great. I wanted to have that on record, and I do have a couple of questions for you. I guess it's a, more of a comment that I'd like to say about the component of your testimony about you potentially losing business or revenue at your location, that's not one of the five criteria that, you know, diminution of?
I wasn't aware of that, but at the time.
Yeah, one of the five, that's like, that's the economic impact, like, so that one, I'm not counting, and I hope my other board members aren't.
Consider it a harm.
Okay, so I just wanted to point that out, and I guess I also wanted to say that we've all looked and considered your testimony here from your email. And I guess, I didn't have any other questions, but before you sit down, just check again. Any questions for Mr. Whitney? All right, we're all set, so thank you, Mr. Whitney, for coming tonight.
Trying to prevent a nightmare.
All right, thank you. I think there were a few other people, this fellow here, I see, actually, I see two other hands, so.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Yeah, feel free to hold that if you want, or you can lift the whole thing up, and it should stay up. Maybe just, you're a tall guy, sorry for making you bend over.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Todd Whitney. I live at 32 Gordon Street in Nashua. Bradley Whitney, who just spoke, is my father, but for the record, I'm speaking on my own behalf tonight. I've just produced a brief memo there, and I provided a copy to Attorney Pruney just now. I'll be brief, I just want to summarize what's in that memo. And primarily, one of the main points I want to make, in today's age, in the city of Nashua, a residentially-zoned piece of property is a very valuable thing. It's so valuable, in fact, that you don't, do not need an ideal lot to be viable. People are flipping homes in the city of Nashua. In our view, this, my view, this property is an excellent residential candidate. It could perhaps use some minor upgrades, but consider the high-tech jobs that are just down the road in Burlington, and Bill Ricka. So somebody could, this would be a great, somebody who wants to live in New Hampshire but work in Mass, this is a commuter's dream, the highway's right there. So it does have a walkout basement onto a patio, decks could be built, a second story could be put on top, it makes a great residence. I've seen many homes in Nashua that are on triangle lots that have very small side yards or no side yards, and not every buyer has children. So it's a, you know, it's a very viable residential lot. The use that's being proposed is an upgrade from the, you know, the professional office use, which was on occasion. In the notes from 1973, whatever the previous notes are, it says that the majority of contracts would be signed off the premises, which was an indicator that it was not, the real estate office was not going to be in intensive use. But all in all, if I've, if my memo includes anything which does not address the five points, you can disregard that, otherwise, it just indirectly references them. But, so we feel there's no hardship, and it doesn't, in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and that some people would be of a diminution by virtue of, you know, more people turning around their driveways, et cetera. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Any questions for Mr. Todd Whitney? I think we're all set, you can have a seat. And, sir, would you like to come up, and I think, ma'am, I saw your hand after that. Good evening, if you could give us your name and address for the record?
My name is Tom Ferraro. I live at 6 Judith Drive, been there for forty years. I can tell you that-
Oh, 6 Judith Drive, okay, welcome.
I can tell you that traffic has really picked up on East Dunstable Road since I moved there. And my concern is, the entrance and exit of that building is right where the lane drop is. Have you ever sat at the light, and it's red, and it turns green, and somebody's coming off the highway, and they go by about 40 miles an hour? What's going to happen when you get to that lane drop, and somebody's trying to pull out of there, and you're going by? I feel it's a hazard.
Well, I'm not going to argue with you, keep going.
I mean, that's why, I just can't see the place being there. And if they have a building on Progress Avenue, why can't they put the drop-off place there?
Well, that's not really for this board's purview. I mean, I appreciate your question, but I just want to say it's not really part of the criteria, but, and I actually have a quick question. Did you say you lived there for sixty years? Forty, four-zero.
Forty years, yep.
So your testimony is that, over those forty years, the traffic's been going up and up? Okay. Is that all you had to say? Let's see, are there any questions for Mr. Ferraro? All right, thanks for coming out this evening. Ma'am, I think you are next in line, and while this lady works, what makes her way up? Was there anybody else who's going to be testifying? All right, so this will be the last testimony in opposition. Good evening, could you give us your name and address for the record?
I'm Seattle Jelineus, 140 East Dunstable, and we've been there, I don't know, 25-plus years. And as Tom was saying, that's exactly where that piece of property is, is where everybody merges. Now, they're merging, like he said, they come through, I'm turning into my driveway. I can't tell you how many times we get the brakes, or the honk, or, you know. So really, just, it's a hazard. You guys talked about it going left, I hadn't even thought about that, because now you're going to have people coming in and out, going left, going right, you got the merge. I don't know how that's going to be safe, there's no way. It's literally, the merge ends at that driveway. The other thing I have to say is, that's residential, and I really don't want businesses crawling up East Dunstable Road, because that's, I don't know, just, it's already bad enough, it's, we're right on the, off the exit, and true blue, and all that, so that's all I really have to say.
Okay.
It's definitely a hazard.
All right, thanks, Ms. Dalianis. Any questions? We're all set, thanks. So that's it for our opposition testimony. Mr. Pruney, would you like to, and maybe you could, let me just kick off, there was that one question, just as a reminder, about when were those classes held, like what year? So take it away.
That would be my first question, my first answer. For the record, Jerry Pruney, attorney representing the applicant. Ms. Meckel bought the property 10 years ago, there haven't been any classes since. She doesn't know exactly when it was, but it was at least 10 years ago since she bought the property, that there wouldn't have been any classes, the classes had to be before then. The backing in of the property, we're not even there, so how can we be the cause of these people backing in and so forth? And we don't think that that's going to be the problem, because the people that use our property know where they want to be and what they want to do. They're going to be part of the neighborhood. The board feels that there's, the drop-off box for 24 hours a day is a problem, and wants to put that as a condition, we would accept that as a condition of the granting of the variance if that's done. Mr. Whitney, I can understand that he may be losing a tenant, but that's not a problem. And if you look at that email, that's all he talks about, is about losing a tenant, and we causing him damage. That is not a condition for variance, or an objection that's for variance, as you correctly pointed out, Mr. Chairman. That's it.
All right, thanks. Any questions? Actually, Mr. Boucher has a question for you.
So I just want to clarify, maybe you spoke before, but just review with me, what is the estimated number of visits per day? I don't, I'm not asking about peak times, kind of per day. And then, the drop-off box, what do you kind of see, or what does your client see for the number of drop-offs or packages that would be in that?
Can you give me a minute, just ask my client, so forth? During the day, they say about 15 people come in, and the drop-off at night, she has no idea, because no one is there to see when they do it.
So if I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, was it, how many during the day, did you say?
Fifteen.
Fifty, okay, thank you very much.
Fifteen, not 15. Fifteen. 10 to 15 is what they say.
10 to 15 per day? Okay, thank you very much.
10 to 15 drop-offs per day is the current volume?
Yes, at the present operation.
Wow. All right, Ms. Vitale?
Is there going to be any other uses of the building?
No uses.
Besides somebody just in there?
No other uses. Just going to be one person there during the day.
I think that's it, all right. Now, as I mentioned in the rules, one and only one person who has spoken in opposition will come back for the final five minutes. What I'd like to do is ask, we'll take maybe just a cup, two-minute recess. All the folks who have spoken in opposition, maybe if you might just want to huddle in the back briefly, and see if you might want to come up with- and see if you might want to come up with somebody who will represent, or maybe everybody who is, well, who's, who has spoken, who that has spoken in opposition is interested in speaking to what Mr. Prunier just said. I, I see this one fellow in the front. Was there anybody else interested in addressing that? We have this, so, sir, there's only two people with their hands up. Why don't we take a recess for a minute, you can sit here with this fellow in the front, if you wouldn't mind, and, and I'll give you a couple minutes to, to decide who's going to speak. So, we'll just take a two-minute recess, we're going to sit here, and we'll come back. And while we're at recess, I'd like to say, we do have an unusually heavy schedule tonight. I don't think cases are going to go this long, but around ten PM, I'm going to poll the Board to see if we're going to keep going later in the evening, if we could punch through the whole agenda tonight. So, I'm sorry about the long agenda, but it's just the way the applications came in.
I do have his, his, he got two cases, number five and number ten.
Yeah.
I'll just put them back to back, because they're both going to be really quick.
Well, yeah, I think, can we do five, when five comes up?
Do five, we'll do five when five comes up, then his tenth, we'll do six, right? We'll do, we'll do your fifth one.
I have to wait for the fifth one.
Yeah.
And then, his tenth one will be-
It's the same thing, I'm going to say the same thing for both.
Oh, oh.
It's a, it's, it's a little case, that way he can keep it. It's the Harris Road, the-
Okay.
Both special exceptions, I don't see why not.
All right, I don't want to-
Two hours it took you to get home?
Oh, my God.
What time did you leave?
Well, that was the, that was the problem, four o'clock.
Oh.
I had to stay for-
Yeah, Captain, I'm so glad you could make it, I thought Mary Ellen was coming. And, so I'm glad we're at four instead of three, on a night like tonight.
Yeah.
I'd like to pull it back to order. So, somebody is going to speak here in opposition, and it's going to be you, Mr. Daly, if you'd like to come to the microphone, and again, this is the final opposition to one twenty-nine, and, Mr. Daly, take it away.
Good evening, excuse me, thank you again. So, the attorney for the request has indicated that the maximum drop-off would be about fifteen customers per day. My estimation, observation, just being, doing what I do, and doing maybe what we all do, I think that is a vast underestimation of, of what that traffic would be. Although, if it is just fifteen per day, why have a business? I, I don't know how that, a business could survive, but that has nothing to do with this Board. I think it's a vast underestimation.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Understood.
All right.
And if there is a condition to have no drop-off box, greatly accepted, greatly appreciated, although, I, I don't, I don't see the veracity, I don't understand how there can be just fifteen traffic customers per day. Again, it's underestimated. Furthermore, have we talked about the, the lighting for the area, and how that would have to be lit in the evening, or does that, is that a concern of this Board?
Well, it hasn't been brought up yet, I, it's really not, you're, the opposition testimony really needs the focus on what Mr. Prunier said, so the lighting, and it's also a planning board issue, but-
Okay, all right, so, so, again, I think the only final point that, that the attorney brought up was, you know, the amount of customer traffic. I don't really understand how it can be just that small. I think it was a, it was a, it was a look, it was a spot question. I think it's gravely underestimated. I think it, well, I stated my case earlier, as did many others in, in the room, as to what that could be. If the traffic pattern is beyond fifteen, I think it would be much more than that, and quite dangerous.
All right, thank you, Mr. Daly. Any questions for that final opposition? All right, thanks for coming tonight. You can have a seat, I'll close the public hearing, and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the matter? Anybody want to jump in first, and I'm going to, Ms. Vitale?
The traffic would be my main concern on it. I've pulled out of, I've pulled out the driveway there numerous times, in the whole, more than one year. And, and I know just from pulling out, and having more than one person pull out at once, there's, there's, even late at night, there's somebody in the area. So, traffic is definitely my, my main concern on it. The hardship of the property, I don't know, it seemed to be working really good in the, in the current use of the property, right now. The last use that I, that I know of-
All right.
Which was, which was as a rental.
Okay. Thank you, any other thoughts?
Not at the moment, I think.
Mr. Boucher, could I indulge you?
There's a couple things going on here, right, so-
Could you speak a little closer?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I know one fellow's-
There's, there's, there's a few things that, that are, that are going on. So, let's just, let me just address the variance as it, the, use variance as, as, in regards to what, what they're looking for, and then, then I'll, I'll tell you what I think about traffic. Barring the issues with traffic, and, and, again, you know, we're not, you know, yes, the, the property has been used as a residential for the past year, and it's just, just facts, right? These are just facts that, that exist. So, when I look at the facts, the, the property had been used in a different use for many years, at that location, okay? So, I, I guess, I, I'm trying to, you know, trying to really understand, though it's, you know, it's a zoned residential on that side, whether or not, you know, this is really a gateway to commercial development on that side, or conversion of commercial development. And I, I have a hard time to say, to see that, and, you know, again, we all live in Nashua. I live right across the, the highway of Bishop Gerton, and I use that corridor all the time. So, like anybody else, I'm familiar with it, I used to live on that side of the highway, so I'm familiar with it. And I used the location across the street when it was a drugstore, and I've used it as a dry cleaner, so, you know, I'm, I'm familiar with the area. So, again, those are just my thoughts on that. As far as the traffic goes, I don't disagree that, that I think, in a lot of places in Nashua, that the, the traffic's increased in volume, and this is no exception either. I lived right next to Bishop Gerton fifteen years ago, I didn't have to wait to get out of my street to leave, to go somewhere in the afternoon, when they were getting out of school, now I do. But that's just a fact of what's going on. So, yes, there is a lot of traffic there. What's interesting is, as we spoke about, and it's just an observation, when we're speaking about the traffic issue there, there was a lot of focus on this property, which, which is, which is warranted, because it's right in front of us. But, I never heard whether or not, the amount of traffic coming out of the current location across the street. So, so when, when the applicant stated that there'd be ten to fifteen trips a day, and we have concerned abutters that, that state that, hey, that's way more than that, I was expecting to hear that this is an issue across the street, too. I didn't really hear that. And I know it's a challenge, no matter what side of the street you're on. It's, it all depends which, which way you're going, right? So, it's, it's really what your preference is. So, so I guess, in, in summary, I think it's a challenge for traffic, no matter where you are in that, in that, in that intersection, where you're coming from. You know what it is, trying to get out of the gas station, it's the same thing, right? It's the same idea, it's even worse, right? If, if the people are trying to pull out that first entrance, they take a left to go towards the highway, it's the same idea. I think it's less impactful here, but no less important to what we're looking at for the neighborhood. So, so that's my, my comment on traffic. I'll, you know, as far as the, the use variance for the property itself, I could see some, some reasons to support the application, but I'd like to hear more from, you know, yourself, and, and the other members.
All right, thank you. Maybe I'll jump in next. There's never any particular order to how we give testimony, since this is your first night, I thought you'd let, like, to hear the three of us versus putting you on the spot first, so to speak. My thoughts on this case are, is I, I'm not finding support for it, for a couple reasons. One is, the, the use of it as a residence, back when, you know, the minutes from nineteen ninety-three are part of the record. And when, when you look at that, that had been a residence and a rental for, for many years. And, yeah, it's a, it's a small lot, and it has a drop-off to Salmon Brook, well, so does my house, I mean, nobody's ever gone over in the drink yet. I mean, it's, I, I find it, while it's a tight lot, there's plenty of tighter lots in Nashua, and I'm persuaded by the testimony we heard this evening, saying, you know, it's, it, it can stand as a reasonable residential lot, that's what I find. I don't find that hardship to prevent it, I don't think it's unreasonable as a rental, as rental or homeowner, either way, residential lot, I'll leave it at that. In terms of the traffic, I mean, I do use true blue cleaners all the time. I guess one observation, I'm surprised about, like, the fifteen drop-offs per day, because if I see even two cars in the parking lot, let alone one, I won't drop my clothes off, because it takes too long. And frequently, I'm finding cars in there, and that's great for them, I think their business must be booming. But, the testimony is fifteen, I'm finding that, I think it's, I think it's going to, I think it's, I'm surprised it's that low, but whatever. To the testimony of one side versus the other side of East Dunstable Road, what I find is, if I'm heading on the highway, it's, it's an ideal location, that business now, because you can get right on the highway. When the light turns red, which is right there, inevitably, traffic stops, and somebody will let me or the other person out. If I'm going the other way, and I see other cars do it all the time, when the light turns red, you wait, since the light's red, traffic, somebody will let you out, and you can get right over in the left lane. I don't see that situation at all on the other side of the road, because even when the light's red, you have the right-turning traffic from, what is that, Harris, Northeastern Boulevard, I'm sorry, which comes out and uphill kind of blindly. And, and so I find that particularly challenging. And there was a testimony tonight, and I see this happening, in that left of two lanes, traffic will come over the bridge quite quick, so the person pulling out has to see through the car in the right lane. And I've witnessed times where, you know, people have had to really throw out the anchor, because a car's going fast in the left lane. And I guess one other point on traffic, I, I didn't mention this earlier, but what I find is, it's the rush hours that are a huge issue. And with the buildup of the school and innovative way, the exit one traffic on Spit Brook has come, has, in the last couple of years, has blossomed. So, everybody like me, who used to get off and get on at exit one, uh-uh, ways everything points you to exit four. And exit four, I found the traffic blossoming the last few years, myself. So, I think that's a particularly challenging lot, to have a business there. So, I'm not finding support for this, but that's where I'm at, and I'm, I'm open to the opinion of others. And, Mr. Welch, would you like to take it away, and maybe you could pull that microphone a little closer, so we could all hear?
So, I'm familiar with the area, I, I live over in that area, on the Harris side. And, and I agree, I think the concern is that drop-off, and with the increased traffic by changing, you know, how the, the current use, is going to lend, you know, to the residence right there, in that other side street, is going to be an issue. So, that's my biggest observations.
Any other thoughts, Ms. Vitale, or Mr. Boucher? Did you have any other, I guess I'm kind of asking, Mr. Boucher, if you had any other thoughts, because you were seeking to hear what the balance of the Board was feeling? Or are you good?
I think I'm good, I think I know where.
Okay. I mean, I'm sensing that you're, you're in support of the application, which is fine, I, I, I'm not, I think you-
Well, there's reasons behind that, no.
Oh, no.
If, if, you know, and again, I, I know that traffic is, is a very big issue, right? So, I'm trying to weigh that against, not weigh it, I'm, I'm taking that in, and, and I take that seriously. But I'm going, you know, and again, I'm, I'm here, I don't live next door, so I don't have personal knowledge of the trips. So, I'm going to take the testimony that's being presented to us, and most, you know, there's, oftentimes where we, where we make our decisions on, you know, what we're going to base our decision on, right? Because this is why there's different people up here, right? So, so I'll take that. I mean, you know, the reason why they want to put the business there, and it's only ten to fifteen drop-offs, you know what? Maybe Progress Ave is not the ideal location for people to go drive to, and maybe this is why, this is what it is. And maybe, you know, for a lot of people, maybe the idea is exactly what, you know, again, I'm not taking sides, but what Attorney Prunier stated was, maybe they'll just drop off on the way home, and the next day on the way home, they'll pick up, and they'll just keep going right out there. So, so, you know, the issue is, you know, I completely understand that, hey, I don't want people turning around in my driveway either, but if that's happening now, you know, I, I don't know if this property is the cause of that, or it's not. But it, it seems like if there's an existing issue, it's not because of the cleaners there. So, you know, it's hard to attribute that to that. So, so then I go back, and I, I look at the property itself, the, the past use of the property, I understand it was residential, I understand the history of it, I, I read, I read the minutes. So, I guess, I'm finding it a little difficult to, in my mind, to deny the application. So, though I'm not, though I'm not, I mean, not, maybe, you know, maybe I'm not clear, and if I'm not clear, let me, let me, you know, help you, you know, make sure it's clear, so that when the motion's made, or the reason why, I may dissent on, depending what kind of vote's being taken. You know, there's four of us here, I want to make sure that it's clear, in case, you know, any future actions are taken. I just don't think that, through the testimony, that there's enough evidence there for me to deny the application. It does not mean that I don't empathize or understand the impact of that intersection and the traffic that exists in that intersection.
Thank you for clarifying your thoughts, very much. Ms. Vitale, had a comment?
Yeah, I, I was listening to what Mr. Boucher was saying about, about, you don't know if that traffic that is, is, was testimony, was missing, like Timberland Drive, and turning around. But when I'm thinking of traffic, and I'm thinking of my use of that area right there, and what I've seen other people do is, is, it wouldn't necessarily be there. People come out, and when you're in a road that narrows, the way that does, from multiple lanes down to the narrower part, and you get uncomfortable with making a left turn through the, the heavy, you know, when traffic is heavier- through the heavy, you know, when traffic is heavier, you tend to make a right and go up the road a little bit, turn in, and come back the other way. I think that you would find that, my belief is, that you would find that would happen, where people didn't feel like they could make the left, so they'll make a right, and then turn around and come back. I've done it myself many times in areas in the city, and I've seen others do it also. So traffic-wise, that's what I'm thinking of this property, coming out of it, what would be the logical thing, and how would I react? It is because of the way the number of lanes are, and the way it narrows, it makes it a little bit more tricky coming out of this property to go to the left. And I can't believe that everybody's gonna go to the right. You're gonna get people going to the left, just, you know, in the general pattern of things, just like you've said that you've made lefts out of the property across the road and on the other side of Timberland. I still don't see the hardship either on the property itself, you know, that it, that would go from the previous use to a new use. I don't see the hardship there.
All right. Thank you. Any other thoughts? I'll hazard a motion, and we'll see where it goes. I'm gonna make a motion on behalf of the owner, Meckel Properties LLC. I'm making a motion to deny the use variance. Again, the requested use variance is to convert the use from a vacant building formerly occupied by a real estate office to a drop-off location for a dry cleaner. I believe that, well, we'll see, I believe that the board finds that the variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, or I should phrase that a little differently. The applicant proposes that it's not suitable for residential, and therefore, it is suitable for business, or this particular business. I believe this board finds that there's not hardship in the property, in that it has for many years served as residential and still can continue to do so. I think the board finds that it would not be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, given the fact that the heavy traffic near exit four, and the two lanes reducing down to one in front of this property, would exacerbate the situation of people making left turns out of there, or causing difficulty by turning around and abutting properties. We have testimony that the, we have written testimony that it'll enhance property values. I guess I find that if there was a business there that was making traffic more difficult, I personally think that that would devalue the abutting properties. So in summary, I think it is contrary to public interest, and substantial justice is not served. So again, I make a motion to deny this use variance. Is there a second to the motion? Well, there is a second to the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor of the motion of denial. So that would be three, and opposed to the denial would be Mr. Boucher. So that motion of denial carries, and, well, that's it. I'm sorry that your, has not been approved, but that's the way the board has voted, and with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number two. Case number three has been postponed, so we're gonna move on to case number four. Case number four is the Ogleesian Farm, is the owner, the address is 17 Greg Road. The request is a variance to convert an existing barn into a residence for a total of two principal residences on the property, and this is in the R40 zone, Ward five. Hi, good evening, ma'am. If you could give us your name and address, and walk us through your application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Deborah Gleeson. I live at 17 Greg Road in Nashua.
Hi.
Hi. So for those of you who aren't familiar with the property, we are living on a former dairy farm with the antique barn on the property, and the house on the property currently houses my husband and myself, and my married daughter, her husband, and her two children. We bought on one side of the property the nature of things and Second Nature Academy, the childcare center, and elementary and middle school that we run as a family business, and Dunstable Rural Land Trust on the other side of the property that is mostly wooded and fields. We are seeking to convert the existing barn on the property to our primary residence, and have our daughter and her family live in a house that's there right now. And to give a little background information, the property was originally a farm, it was a dairy farm, and over the past hundred or so years, it was strictly residential. When we purchased the property 10 years ago and started the school, we went back to farming on the property. So we raise our own meat, our own fruits, and our own vegetables. As some of you may know, that farming is a seven-day-a-week job, and sometimes a 24-hour job, so it's necessary to live on the property, and many hands make light work. So it takes a lot of us to maintain all the work that happens on the property. We believe that by doing this will not be contrary to public interest, nor will it alter the character of the neighborhood. It will maintain the rural look and feel of the property as it is today, and as it has been for the past 150 years. It will keep the authentic character of the barn, so you're not going to change the look and feel of the rural setting. It will not necessitate any additional parking or driveways, and therefore, will not interfere with the current traffic pattern. We already have our family living there, and the property can fit 15 to 20 cars parked on the driveway, the property is so large. And in additional, in addition to the three-car garage and our current house, is an additional, probably five or six parking spaces, in addition to parking along the driveway. And it will allow additional family members to continue to allow, continue to reside on the property, to be able to help us with the farming that's there right now, as well as help us with the running of the school. This is an awkward location. Can I do this?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. The proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance, because we will be keeping the property as residential and farming as it is now. It's a very large lot, there's three acres in Nashua, and additional six-plus acres on the Dunstable side of the property. So this lot size can accommodate an additional residence on the property. We won't be adding any additional buildings, we're just converting the existing building that's already there. And as I said before, it will not impact any traffic, parking, driveways, entrances and exits. The driveway loops in and out, so there's one way in and one way out, an entrance and an exit. It circles down around the barn, past the house, and back up on the other side, so there's already two curb cuts to the property. We believe that substantial justice would be done, because this would benefit our growing family in allowing us to keep the family farm running with the help of our younger members of the family, as my husband and I age, and having the ability for the grandchildren to be able to grow up on a farm. The proposed will not diminish the values of surrounding properties, it will actually, we believe, increase the property values by increasing our own property value, and having residents where the barn is will allow us to do further landscaping and maintain the property so it's aesthetically pleasing from the street. The suggested modification of the barn structure would, we feel, would beautify the dwelling, and, excuse me, it would further improve and preserve the structure that's on the property right now. So as we said, the barn is 150 years old. When we purchased the property, we did some restorations, we put new siding on the barn, we shored up the framing, and we added a new metal roof to it and put new windows in it, and this would allow us to put more improvements into the barn, to make the barn look better from the street. The special conditions that exist include the fact that the property has been restored back to a working farm, so it's back to what its original condition was. So we do grassfeed our animals, and we rotate them on several fields around the property. We also have a small orchard and gardens that we maintain, and we try to produce a lot of our own food. We are currently working with the USDA to improve our crop production, add some greenhouse space, do some soil amendment and improvement, improve the fences, and do some permaculture and rotational grazing on the farm, and that is low impact on the soil and the water on the farm. And again, having more family members there will enable us to do that. And as I mentioned, having many hands to maintain and keep a farm is kind of the spirit of New England rural farming, and where many members of the family reside together in one location, and we think this would benefit not only the farm itself, but our family and the younger generations of the family to come.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ogleesian. Any questions? No questions, you silenced us. I think we're all set with your testimony.
Do that to the kids, too, it's amazing.
You could have a seat, we'll see what else is at. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the proposed two residences at 17 Greg Drive? Anybody with questions or concerns? Opposition? Going once, going twice? To 17 Greg Drive, seeing no opposition, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts, Ms. Vitale?
I'm supportive of this application. The property's large, keeping the condition of a barn and a working property within the city limits, I find it as a benefit. You know, I don't see any problems with property values. I think it's within the spirit of other applications that have come before us. Not too many that we get to have a barn changed over to a residence, but I think it's a really good thing to do. Coming from Iowa and saving barns is an admirable thing.
All right, thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I agree with Mrs. Vitale, and I think this applicant has proved that they care about what's, you know, going on there and their properties, and have shown that through past experiences, so I support the application as it stands.
Thank you, and I'll chime in next and say, I support the application. You know, the addition of another principal property, if, you know, it's such a large property, I see it as no impact, you really wouldn't know it. You know, the driveway is well-laid out, one entrance, one exit, I don't think there's really any negative impact there. I think that, you know, it's, and that and the business has been well-maintained, it's an applicant with a history that does well, and that provides support for me, that I have every confidence that if this variance was granted, there'd be no issues, and therefore, I think it's within the spirit and intent, that's where I'm at. Mr. Welch?
Yeah, I support the application as well. I think it's within the spirit of, you know, the application and current use. I think it will increase, it won't cause any impact, you know? That's it.
All right. Ms. Vitale, would you like to make a motion? If not, I'll go ahead.
I haven't done this one for a while, definitely. I make a motion to approve the application for the owner, Ogleesian Farm LLC, at the address of 17 Greg Road. Description was requesting a variance to convert existing barn into a residence for a total of two principal residents on the property. It is in R40 zone. This variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. In this case, we have a larger piece of property with an existing home and a barn. They're looking to combine their families all on one property, so they can continue working the farm with all family members present. They'll be improving the condition of the barn, the existing property, it's within the spirit and intent of our ordinance. It should not, there was no testimony, but it should not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served.
We have a motion on the table, and Mr. Boucher's hand is in the air to second that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor. So that's unanimous, that's approved, so good luck with your application. And just remember, the 30-day window of appeal applies to every case tonight, so that you might, not that you're probably making any changes of the property, but there is that 30-day window of appeal. So thank you, and have a good evening. And then moving right along, we'll go on to case number five. It's the John J. Flatley Company is, did anybody need to take a break? I'm sorry. Okay, yep, we're moving along. John J. Flatley Company is the owner. 200 Innovative Way is the address. The request is a special exception to work within another wetland buffer to allow for grading and stormwater management. It's Ward eight in the PI zone. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Jerry Prunier. I'm an attorney, 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashua, and representing the applicant this evening. We have filed a petition with the Conservation Commission, including the nine special conditions for a special exception before this. The commission has considered the special conditions, they have approved this project. You've granted a variance for the 28 units, as well as the ski area, which turned out to be a little bit more successful than everybody thought it would be. There are two conditions of the Conservation Commission approval. We will comply with those conditions, and be here to answer any other questions the board may have.
Let me just, first of all, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Prunier? I think you're, I'm sure you're familiar with the nine wetland special conditions.
Yes, I am. That's what I mentioned earlier, that we provided the Conservation Commission with those nine questions, and they've been approved by the Conservation Commission as well as part of our application.
Right, so we're gonna include the minutes of the Conservation Commission with this meeting tonight, and so the two, on August 2nd is when they approved, and your testimony was that you abide by those two conditions?
We will comply by those, that's correct.
Okay. So just for the record, the nine wetland special conditions, by testimony here, the applicant meets, and the Conservation Commission has approved that. So any other questions for Mr. Prunier? All right, we have none, you can have a seat. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of the proposed work in the other wetland? This is Innovative Way. Are there any questions or concerns or opposition? Questions, concerns? I see no opposition, so I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the case? Mr. Boucher?
I'm in favor of the application, I think it speaks for itself, and, yeah.
All right, Mr. Welch?
I'm in favor of it.
Ms. Vitale?
I'm in favor of it. Wish I could've seen the ski slope in use, I never made it up there, but...
Nor did I, and hopefully I will this winter, but I, yeah, I find this is a, you know, a minor incursion into the wetland, and it's needed for the use of the apartments and that ski slope, so I'm in favor of it also. Maybe I'll hazard a motion right now. I make a motion on behalf of the owner, John J. Flatley Company. Again, the request is a special exception to work within another wetland buffer to allow for grading and stormwater management. This application is listed in the table of uses. There's really no impact to traffic congestion. It'll not overload public water drainage sewer or other municipal systems. In fact, it'll likely improve the stormwater management, that's what the whole upgrade is about. There'll be no change or impair the integrity of the neighborhood, and the nine wetland special conditions are by testimony met. This has been recommended favorable by the Conservation Commission on August 2nd, and the applicant says that they will abide by the two stipulations. So with that, I make, I feel all the criteria is met, and I make a motion to approve as presented. Is there a second to my motion? Ms. Vitale has seconded it. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor. So that's unanimous, so that is approved. And does anybody need to take a break? We're gonna keep going, and I'm gonna stay to the order here. Next case is number six. The City of Nashua is the owner, George and Ilan Kessler, doing business as the Blushing Rose Flower Shop, is the applicant. The address is 40- The address is 44 Broad Street, and the request is a use variance to allow the temporary sales of Christmas trees on a vacant lot. Is there anybody here to present this case? Case... Hi, sir, if you'd like to come up to the microphone and give us your name and address, we do have your application here in front of us, right over there. And you can both speak. When you're speaking, just identify who you are, so the transcriber will know it.
I'm George Kessler, 280 East Dunstable Road, and I'm the owner of the Blushing Rose.
Welcome. Would you like to walk us through your application, or is this other fellow going to do that?
My son would do it.
Oh, all right. And your name is?
Hello, my name is Ilan Kessler, and thank you for the opportunity today.
Okay, and your address for the record?
149 Canongate, Nashua, New Hampshire.
All right, welcome. Looks like you have electronic presentation.
Yeah, I just have some brief notes.
All right.
I'm a little inexperienced with this process, so I apologize in advance if I fumble through it and any mistakes I make in the procedure.
All right. Well, we're looking for the points of law, if you want to try to touch on that, if you can.
Great. Well, my father, and myself, and actually the rest of my family, my sisters included, we have been selling Christmas trees next door formerly at the location that was Dairy Queen and is now Dunkin' Donuts for over 10 years. Prior to that, there was another reseller that sold trees there for even longer. Throughout these years, we have enjoyed a great relationship with the local neighborhood, the community, the residents, the business owners. It's been our pleasure, and we've always taken great pride in clean display and respecting our neighbors. And I think it shows why our lease was always renewed by the former owner, Mr. David Dion. And then, in the interim, while the construction was not complete, the new owner, based on our references, was very gracious to allow us the opportunity to sell trees again there last year. So we've been in continuous sales there for... We were just discussing, we think maybe 15 years. There was a break where we took one year off or so, or two years off, and another reseller came in, but nonetheless. So in reference to the application and to what I believe the board is looking for, I would just... What's that? I would just like to point out that this proposal will observe the spirit of the neighborhood. There are conditions exist that literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. The proposed use will not diminish the values of the surrounding properties, and substantial justice will be done to the property owner by granting the variance. In further detail, the proposed use would not alter the characteristics of the neighborhood, threaten public safety, health, or otherwise, the welfare of the community. I think it's a benefit to the community, to the people in the local area. It's a convenience to buy those trees, which it's quite difficult, you know, for some people to move trees a great distance, whether it be on their car or whatever method they use. As mentioned, we've sold trees there for over a decade, and the use is compatible in intensity, characteristics, and appearance with the surrounding land uses. Our plan, our site plan, ingress and egress will not obstruct traffic, will be well lit, and our operating hours will be from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Let's see here. We feel that the use of Christmas tree sales is very reasonable because we've been there for a long time, so the land use, the zoning use of the location of the Dairy Queen is actually the same zoning as the one they're requesting for variance now. We feel a restriction applied to the property would not be fair. A restriction wouldn't be fair. One reason why is because the City of Nashua has already, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but submitted a variance request for a retail operation on this site, and it was approved. So we hope that that consideration will carry forward for our request, which is, we believe, in a smaller scale and scope than the one that's already been approved by the city. The proposed use will certainly not diminish the value of surrounding properties. We hope that the success of our operation, because the City of Nashua is the owner of the property, so we hope that our success demonstrates the value of the property, so the city can command the highest price for the city's benefit. And this is already a commercial district. There are several retail operations that flank us on all sides, and there are auto repair, car wash, and a Dunkin' Donuts. Last but not least, the tree lot would not create any harm to the general public, and we hope that you consider the lease revenue provided to the City of Nashua to be an additional source of income for the benefit of the community.
All right. Sure you haven't done this before? It was pretty smooth.
Thank you.
Any questions for the Kesslers? Well, you've silenced us also. All right, you could have a seat, and we'll see what comes up.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else to speak in favor of the proposed Christmas tree farm at 44 Broad Street? Is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? Questions, concerns? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts, Mr. Boucher?
It's easy for me. Obviously, the location doesn't warrant any issues with me. It's very clear that you can only get in that property going one direction. You know, as the applicant stated, it's a very clear in-and-out type operation, and again, this is not something new to the area, just on the other side of the Broad Street Parkway entrance. And it's temporary, so this is only going to be happening for about a month, you know, or 30 days, or whatever you want, 30, 31 days. So I think it's all good, and I don't see anything or any reason why I would deny the application.
All right. Ms. Vitale?
Yeah, I have... I'm very supportive of it. I've bought my own Christmas trees there. It is well lit. It's very clean. You know, it provides a service to the people that go in and purchase something, and I see it as a benefit, and it is temporary.
All right. Mr. Welch?
Yeah, I have no issues with it.
All right. I'm supportive of the application also. You know, I think it's... Just wanted to note again for the record that, you know, the Christmas tree sales have been right adjacent to it for many, many years, and I don't really see any difference with it being one property down. And that's kind of, in a way, a special condition on this property. It's, you know, it's on the same side of the road, same general spot, right next door, and I think that's a reason why I don't think there'll be any issues from it. Would anybody like to... Ms. Vitale, would you like to keep it going?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application on case number five. The owner's City of Nashua. The applicant is George and Ilan Kessler, doing business as the Blushing Rose Flower Shop. The address, 44 Broad Street. They are requesting a use variance to allow the temporary sales of Christmas trees on a vacant lot. The zoning district is GI/HB Zones. This use variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. In this case, the applicant has, for a number of years, both them and a previous applicant or Christmas tree seller was on an adjacent property. They're looking to move to this property, albeit temporary business. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There should be no effect to surrounding properties. There was no testimony, and it's not contrary to public interest. It will serve a purpose, and substantial justice will be served.
I'll second that motion. So we have a motion on the table, seconded. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor. So that's unanimous, so good luck with your Christmas tree sales. Hopefully, they're up. If they're not, maybe you could give your business card to Mr. Prunier, and he could use some help with some land use attorney clients. You did a pretty good job, I think.
... Close of the Christmas. Move out. Thank you.
All right, I'll close the public meeting on case number six. Are we good to keep going? Open the public hearing on case number seven. The owner is Gary Barrett. The applicant is Gilberto Pools. It's 19 Blue Hill Avenue. The request is a variance to exceed maximum accessory use area. Forty percent is permitted, 49% is requested to construct a 16 by 32-foot in-ground swimming pool. This is Ward Four, the RA Zone. Hi, good evening. Would you like to walk us through your application?
Hi, my name is Jay Henshall. I represent Gilberto Pools, representing the Barretts.
There's something we need, before we get into this, we need to clarify. There is a... It might make a huge difference. This is not an in-ground swimming pool. It's an above-ground pool, and that's by nature a temporary structure. I don't know if it applies.
Well, Mr. Falk...
We thought it was in-ground, but the application does say above-ground, so it's just, I wouldn't worry about it. Same size.
Yeah. So I'll just jump in. You had it right. Your application, he confirmed when you wrote it out, says above-ground, and it was advertised as in-ground, but the size of it, and the most important point, the 49% requested, that remains the same whether it's above-ground, and above grounds are considered permanent. So the request of 49% is correct, and I think we're good to move forward with it. So thank you for bringing up that little error there.
I just wanted to know if I needed to be standing here.
You still do.
Basically, what we're proposing is this pool, we're looking for relief in 9%. The lot is a relatively good-sized lot. As far as impact on the neighborhood, it'll have virtually none. The situation of the lot is, on the left side, it's bounded by the Everett Turnpike. On the rear, it's bounded by railroad tracks, and past that, a large wooded area. The front faces the buffer area for the turnpike. So there's only one neighboring house on this. The pool's not visible from the street. It's not intrusive in the neighborhood. It does meet easily all the five criteria. And we're just seeking to be able to do that. The reason why we can't do this is simply is the basement isn't finished. If they had it finished off basement, we wouldn't be standing here, because it's... It just don't meet the square footage in the house to make the 40%. Basement is heated and able to be finished, but at this point, it's not finished yet. It may be finished in the future, but at this point, it's not. And that's what's holding this up. It's just a matter of...
Yep.
The footprint of the house is irrelevant as to what's built in the house.
Yep, thank you. I mean, that is also, you know, what is stated in your application, and thank you for clarifying that. You're... In other words, because the living space of the house is small, there's this situation of your pool would kick it up to 49%, whereas if it was actually a bigger house, you wouldn't even need to be here.
Yes. If, for instance, this house, if the basement had been finished off, we wouldn't need to be here.
Right. All right, did you have anything else to add, or I think?
It's really about it. I mean, it's a pretty simple, you know, it's a pretty simple request. There's not a lot of complications.
All right, let's see if there's any questions. Are there any questions? I'm sorry, I forgot what your name is. What was your name again?
Jay.
Jay, what was the last name?
Henshall.
Could you spell that?
Yeah, it's H-E-N-S-H-A-L-L.
All right, great. That's like... Ms. Vitale has a question for you.
I just have one question, because I was... I did read it as above-ground, but then I didn't read it as an in-ground, and I just was wondering, when you get to the end of the season, do you have to pump water out?
No.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Any other questions for Mr. Henshall? We're all set. You could have a seat. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of the proposed pool at 119 Blue Hill? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the pool? See no questions, concerns, or opposition, so I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts, Ms. Vitale?
As you were stating before, just because the house is the size that it is, when you put a pool like this in the backyard, you're going to, you know, nine times out of 10, run into this problem where the percentage is off a little bit. They are surrounded by pretty much, you know, a couple sides where they're not going to have any impact on the neighbors at all, and there's no neighbors here speaking in opposition, so I'm in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I support the application, too. 9%. They sound like a lot, but if you, again, taking a look at the actual location of the property, the appearance is not... I don't know if you really could tell the difference, especially with the three sides that are abutting non-residential-type properties. So I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
Yeah, I support the application as well. When I drove by, I don't think it's going to... 9% is going to make any bit of difference.
And I'll just chime in. I support the application also, and we... Again, as the applicant says, we've seen this before, when you have a small square-footage house, which you don't really know. The house looks no different, really, than the other houses on the street, pools in the back. I don't... There's... As Mr. Boucher said, it doesn't impact anyone. There's no one here in opposition. Probably nobody, except for the owners, will even know the pool is there, and yet they can enjoy it with this 49%. So I'll make a motion, if you don't mind. I'll make a motion to approve the request to exceed maximum accessory use area. Forty percent is permitted, 49 is requested, and that's to construct a 16 by 32 above-ground swimming pool. I believe the board finds a variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, which is a reasonably sized swimming pool, but although the square footage of the house is small, it ends up being a 49% accessory use area. But the board finds that, given the conditions of the land bordered by the railroad and the highway, and doesn't impact any neighbors, the board finds that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Think it'll not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels, nor be contrary to public interest and substantial justice is served by the land... to the landowner by allowing a pool, even though it's 49% maximum accessory use area. So I make a motion to approve as presented, seconded by Ms. Vitale. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor. So that's unanimous, so good luck with your pool, and I'll close the public meeting on case number six. You can have a good evening. Are we good to keep going? We're good to keep going. I'd like to open the public hearing on case number seven... I'm sorry, case number eight. The owners are the G... I've got to put my glasses on. The G and C.L. Ahern Family Trust. Excuse me. The address is 1 Old Balcom Farm Drive. The request is the following: A special exception to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit. Number two, a variance to exceed maximum area of accessory dwelling unit. 750 square feet is permitted, 930 square feet are proposed. Is there anybody to present this application? If you'd like to come to the microphone, and you could walk us through your application, or you could let it stand as presented, the written application. It's your choice. Give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. William Bourq. It's B-O-U-R-Q-U-E.
Uh-huh.
And I live at 86 Connett Road, Nashua, New Hampshire.
Welcome.
I'm here to represent my mother-in-law and father-in-law. I apologize for them not being here. My father-in-law is... was released from the hospital today with a knee replacement, and she's caring for him right now.
All right, well, we wish the best for him.
So let me start off with explaining that the land has been in the family for over 75 years, and they want to keep it that way. We want to have the in-law apartment to care for my aging in-laws. My wife is a nurse, and the opportunity to have the in-laws in the basement and to care for them is one of the reasons why we did this. Now, going back to when the house was designed and built in 2002, it was designed to have an in-law apartment... it was designed to have an in-law apartment in the basement for my mother-in-law's mother. She has since deceased. They started work on the basement back then, but she deceased before it was finished. The city currently has the basement as finished, and it was started, and permits were pulled for that previously. But since she passed away, it stopped at that rate. So, now, as my in-laws age, and we want to be there for them, help them with the property. We believe there's no increase in traffic to the neighborhood. I have three sons. One's in college. One will be going to college next year. And I have a fourteen-year-old. Our job schedules differ. I go in quite early, my wife a little bit later, and of course, my in-laws are retired. Also, with us watching the house, they'll be able to travel and not worry about the home. There will be no change in the exterior structure. It'll stand as it stays currently today. There'll be no change in the character of the neighborhood. There will be no need for increased parking. The park, the driveway is over three hundred feet long, has a three-car garage and an accessory loop for the extra cars. In regards to the variance, going from seven fifty to nine thirty, the way this structure was built, the foundation has a large footprint. And in order to make the rooms work and put the columns inside the walls, there's many rooms that are probably larger than they need to be, especially a hallway between a couple of the rooms. It's roughly seven foot by fifteen foot, so like a hundred square feet of, I'm gonna call it wasted space. It's just a hallway, but it hides the columns that hold up the home. The property currently has a tax base probably three times more than the surrounding homes, and we believe that there is no detriment to the neighborhood in regards to what we're currently asking for. The added changes to the home will only increase the tax base. And again, we don't believe that there's any change in the neighborhood and character of the home.
All right. Were you gonna testify also, or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Could you give us your name and address?
My name is Greg Ahern, and I'm the son. And I'm also, I am also on the trust.
Uh-huh.
So, I reside in California. But basically, I came back to, you know, be here for this process to, you know, as my parents are getting older, they've had the home and the land and the family for a very long time. You know, it's, the home is large, and it's getting, you know, to be, gonna be a lot of work. So, also, having my sister being a nurse and then moving in will be a great help. So, that's pretty much, you know, my main concern is having the, you know, people having the in-law apartment accessible.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for either a, Mr., was it Spav? Did I get that right?
Bill.
What was that?
Bill.
Bill, what was your last name?
Bourq.
Oh, okay. Wow, I was off on that. Any questions for Mr. Bourq or Mr. Ahern? I guess I just have a couple of questions, and that is, you've already stated this, but the accessory dwelling unit is for family members and only for blood relatives. And I just wanted to clarify that you understand that. It's really, it's not, you're not creating a two-unit dwelling. This is just an accessory in-law dwelling for blood relatives or your in-laws.
Correct.
And there's nine criteria. Have you seen this criteria?
Forgive me, I briefly seen it, but my father-in-law not being here.
Okay, well, maybe I will just tear this page off and you could take a look at it. Would you mind? By testimony, I think you're adhering to all that, but if you just want to peruse through that real quick, there's that one criteria that you have to provide a covenant to the city of Nashua. It's kind of an administrative thing that you do, you know, not right now, but in a little while. But I believe you meet all those with that one covenant as an action item, you know, for the near future. And I'd just like you to look at that and see if you're good with those, 'cause that's, that's the criteria for an accessory in-law dwelling.
So, as I read it, I believe it means that you're not gonna rent this out and have income coming in.
Well, to a non...
Correct.
Blood relative, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, so you're saying, your testimony is you meet all those.
Yeah, I mean, our plan is to keep the house in the family for another seventy-seven years.
Yeah, that'd be great. Any other, I know you did not just ask, any questions for Mr. Bourq or Mr. Ahern? All right, we're all set. You could have a seat. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of the proposed accessory dwelling at 1 Old Balcom Farm Drive? Anybody with questions, concerns, opposition? Questions, concerns, none? So, I'll close. Oh, wait, maybe we do. Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, my name is Dennis Plowell. I live at 100 Flintlock Drive.
Welcome.
And question was more or less like clarification I would like to have is, when you talk about an accessory, is that like an extension to the existing building or separate structure?
Well, thanks for the question. This is, the proposal on this is not a separate structure. It's to use a part of the existing house as really a separate unit for the in-laws. So, there's no changes proposed to the house, just, you know, a separate kitchen and bathroom that...
Okay, within the existing structure.
Yeah, in fact, one of the criteria I just handed them, it says it needs to be incidental. So, in other words, it's specifically worded to not look like a two-family, you might say, but just to look like a single-family home, but there's two separate living units, you might say, inside.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
That answers the question.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks for coming tonight. Was there anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing, I don't know if that was really opposition. I think that was more of a question, so I don't think the applicant needs to come back. I think you're all set. So, with that, I'll close the public meeting, and, I'm sorry, the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the matter, Mr. Boucher?
Sure. I support the special exception and the variance. So, as far as a special exception to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit, again, I think that, you know, there's been testimony to what it's going to be used for. It's very clear in our bylaw, in our city ordinance, and what they're looking to do. So, I think that's very clear. I think more so, I think anything that would have any concern for us to pass or would bring anything up would be the square footage. I think that in this case, this is quite incidental. It is a huge piece of property. It's a huge, it's a very large house. So, I think that it's incidental, and what I mean by that is, I don't think, as you look at the share size of the house and look at that, you would note a difference, and I think it fits in quite well. So, two things. I support the special exception for the dwelling unit, and then also, I support the variance to have an overage on the square footage allowed.
Thank you. Ms. Vitale?
I would agree, and as was stated in testimony, this was previously approved and just never finished at that time.
All right, Mr. Welch?
Yeah, I support the special exception and the variance.
All right, and as for me, I support it as well. I mean, I'm probably reiterating what Mr. Boucher said, but, you know, it's a very large property, and the situation that that one basement area was already, construction was started, the fact that there's an overage from the seven hundred and fifty to nine hundred and thirty square feet, that's a lot of overage, but it's already a big house. Been there for many years, big property, and I think that has no impact to the neighborhood or the abutters. And in terms of the special exception to allow an in-law unit, I think, again, that's no impact. And it actually, you know, as they said, when you have a big house, it's actually pretty handy to have a younger pair of hands around to do that. So, I think it makes sense as it is. Maybe I'll hazard a motion, if you don't mind. I'll first make a motion for the special exception. I make a motion to approve the special exception to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit. The board finds it'll not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. It's a large lot with one driveway. Board finds it'll be no impact of public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal system. I mean, it's city water, city sewer there, and having one extra in-law unit has no impact. By testimony, the special regulations for an in-law unit, I'm not gonna tick through all those. They're on record, and the applicant, by written and oral testimony, meets those. And the board finds it'll not impair integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood. There's no changes made to the outside of the house. So, I make a motion to approve the special exception, seconded by Mr. Boucher. Any discussion on the motion to approve the special exception? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor. So, that's unanimous, and moving right along. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the variance to exceed the maximum area of accessory dwelling unit. Our code permits seven hundred and fifty square feet. Nine hundred and thirty square feet is proposed. I think the board finds that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use, which is the existing story or basement, first floor. I'm not sure how to define that. Was already initially set to be an in-law unit. And given the large size of the house, this nine hundred and thirty square feet, I think the board finds it's still within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Think the board feels there's no impact to surrounding parcels, and substantial justice would be served to this large piece of land to allow the in-law, the seven, nine hundred and thirty square feet. So, I make a motion to approve the variance, and that's seconded by Mr. Boucher. Any discussion on the motion of approve the variance? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor. So, that carries unanimously. So, your request is approved, and we wish you good luck with that. And I'll close case number eight. And I think we'll take a five-minute recess. Good with that? We're gonna take a five-minute recess, folks, and then we'll come back and keep going. Eight thirty-five. How's business?
Well, we'll find out. You know, I've been gone since beginning of the month, so...
Oh, really?
Yeah, I left, I left on the thirty-first. Went down to Boston and flew out, so I've been gone.
Thirty-first of August?
So, this is a new month, so I have no cars out, and...
Wow.
We better get the move on. We'll find out how business is when I walk in tomorrow and find out how many cars everybody has.
Doesn't that sap the energy, two-hour commute?
Especially when I got up at three o'clock swanning, you know?
Well, I started Monday. I wanna go in early. What time, you know?
Yeah.
Be there at nine, half-past. So, I left at eight, seven. Terrible traffic. And so, I ended up getting a badge. And that allows me seven to seven. And I said, well, can I get in early? He said, oh, yeah, but it's gonna take a day before the, we can give you that. So, today, I left at six fifteen and got there at seven. And then they called, said, okay, you're good, twenty-four hours. So, tomorrow, I'll leave earlier, and maybe all will be well.
That's good. That's good.
Where do you drive to?
Marlboro.
That's right. Not my choice.
I came from Boston at, from Boston at five-thirty this morning.
You know, I'm thinking we're moving along a little quicker. Maybe we'll just see where we go at ten o'clock, you know? We might, maybe we can punch through all of these tonight. I mean, are you guys, think you're good till ten anyway?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
This, you got four left.
Yeah, we might move.
Yeah, so, no worries.
Yeah, right. Easily make it through.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should, yeah.
Yeah, of course.
Could I indulge you, Mr. Perunier, to shut the door? And if there's anybody out there, maybe just give them the hook. All right, I'd like to get us back in session. We're gonna move right on and open the public hearing on case number nine. So, let's open up that case. The owner is Susan Murphy. No, I didn't miss one. I'm sorry. So, it's Susan Murphy. The address is 5 Salmon Brook Drive. The request is a special exception to allow accessory in-law dwelling unit. And number two is a variance to exceed the maximum area of accessory dwelling unit. Seven hundred and fifty square feet is allowed. Eight hundred and ninety-six square feet is proposed. Who is here to present this case? Hi, if you'd like to come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and walk us through your application. You could, yeah, pull that up. Great, there you go.
My name is Eric Bennett, and I'm with Tri-State Window and Siding. We're a general contractor, and I have been asked by the homeowner, Susan Murphy, to come present to the board this evening. We, as stated, we are looking to put on an in-law apartment onto Mrs. Murphy's home at 5 Salmon Brook Drive. And the purpose of the in-law would be to house her eighty-two-year-old mother, who is also, is a lifetime resident here in Nashua, and is no longer in the position, she's recently widowed, and is in the position of having, you know, not wanting to live by herself any longer. And the proposal here is for her to sell her home here in Nashua and move in with her daughter. The proposal is to put on an addition to the rear of the home, and the addition outside of, outside of the size, outside of the size request of eight hundred and ninety-six square feet will meet all other building codes and other requirements of an accessory dwelling. The, as we, as I said before, the purpose is for her to house her elderly mother, and it will be occupied by a blood relative, which we learned from the last in-law case. And the idea behind here is for the elderly accommodation to care for, care for her mother. She does have a relative... does have a relatively large home as it is, but she's got a full house. She's got all children at home and herself. She has no capacity in the addition, in the existing home to create an in-law. So the decision was, decided to press ahead with an idea of putting an accessory building on the, on there. It's going to allow for the single-story living, and one of the things is, is that it create, we need to create large, larger-than-normal walkways and doorways in a structure like this. So it does consume additional square footage to create those. The impact of the property is, the investment's going to be well over $100,000 if constructed as proposed. And so it certainly will not devalue the property or the property or adjacent properties. And it's going to be done in the same colors and scopes. It'll blend right into the building and the characteristics of the existing building with vinyl siding, roofing, et cetera. And lastly, it's the impact on the, on her mother. The challenge here is that, folks are going from larger homes into these smaller dwellings, and they struggle with the compromise. They struggle with, they want their laundry, they need these things. Plus, they also need larger openings, which does, does impact your ability to design a floor plan that'll accommodate larger 40-inch walkways, 36-inch door openings. And this is construct, this is designed with all of those factors in mind to allow for wheelchair or handicap access. Fortunately, she's not confined to a wheelchair or any of those things at this time, but it's been drawn and designed in those, in those ways. That's about, that's about the situation. Does the board have any questions?
We'll find out. Any questions for Mr. Bennett? I guess I have one for you. It's a little hard for me to envision. What's the, how many stories is this proposed?
It's a single story. It's a single story, all single-story living. It has, we're hoping to build it with no, you know, with no step on the way in, and a ramp to perhaps get for, for the access to the existing home.
Mm-hmm.
But it is all one, is all one level. It will have a basement, a dug basement for storage, but no access to that storage from the living area, just simply for storage.
Okay.
And to provide a foundation for the structure.
All right. I could say right off the bat, I mean, I don't have any issue with the special exception. You know, I'm struggling a bit with that 896 square feet versus 750 square feet. I mean, I hear you loud and clear that, you know, your applicant has, coming from a big home. I was just wondering, like, had you considered, like, what, you know, 750, I mean, what would the, let's just speculate. If you were to try to adhere to that, you're looking at 32 by 28 now. What, could you, what would have to happen if you, if you really just...
Well, you'd really have, I mean, I'd have to do some, I'd have to do some calculating, but I think you'd be down in the 28, 25 range to get there. It is one of the things. It's not, and it's not something that, you know, I have, I work in other communities, and there are these restrictions in different communities. And I'm finding it difficult to deliver what homeowners and, and these residents want in, under that, under that size. Because when you get down there, you're going to end up with, you have to spread that out amongst the rooms, and you end up, especially when you're adding laundry and a bathroom that is large enough to manipulate a wheelchair in perhaps, you start using up a lot of that space. And you end up with a 12 by 12 bedroom, which doesn't really allow navigation around it. It starts to get like an older home.
Yeah.
That's not the, one of the goals of these, of these families. The goals of these families are, is to make sure they don't have to do it again. You know, they have to make modifications later on. It is very traumatic, it is very traumatic for, for an elderly person to make this move in the first place. You know, in short, very short order, I'm doing another one in this town, in this town of London area. And the trauma, that the trauma of actually making the move to the smaller environment of this particular woman is, I can't even, you know, you and I can't fathom it, that she's, she simply can't adjust. And it's kind of sad, they're spending a fortune, that family's spending a fortune, and she's not happy. So it's quite sad.
Well, I guess, you know, we've recently upped the square footage. It was 700 before? Seven. It used to be 700. Now it's 750. Yeah. And so, you know, we have quite a few around town at 700. I mean, by far the majority. And, well, no, I guess it was a little unsaid, you know, it's kind of hard to envision. It just looked a bit non-incidental when it's that big. But it's just my thought and whatever. Thank you for your...
Well, the applicant's, the applicant's direction on that is that there's a very large family. And my experience with, with the resident is, is that she's a clutterer, a person who likes stuff. And it's, so those are, so there are a lot of considerations that have gone into this. Obviously, this costs more. So that's another consideration, obviously. They're not looking to spend more money than they have to, but it's settled in at this, and it's, they're hoping the board will approve that.
All right, thanks. That was it for my questions. Any other questions? I think we're all set on questions, Mr. Bennett, so you can have a seat.
Very good, thank you.
Was there anybody else to speak in favor of this application at 5 Salmon Brook Drive? Was there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? Questions, concerns, opposition? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts, Ms. Vitale?
I would agree that it's a little, it is a little larger than what you would normally think. But driving through that area, there are other homes square foot-wise. I don't think it will be out of place to have that as an addition. In this case, we're looking at something that's an addition to the home versus doing, you know, an in-law apartment in existing space, or, you know, unfinished basement or anything like that. So I think I'm comfortable with it.
All right.
It makes sense when you're having an elderly, you know, parent move in, to have those bigger doorways, hallways, you know, the moving space is pretty important because you want them to feel comfortable in the new space and that ability to move around if the time ever comes that they have to use a wheelchair and stuff is an important thing, if you have the opportunity to do it, which I believe this fits into the neighborhood and the opportunities there. I'm comfortable with it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Welch?
I support it. I mean, I was, looking at the drawings, I was a little concerned until I drove by, and I actually kind of see the look of the neighborhood, and there's no opposition, obser, what's the word?
Oppositions.
Opposition, there we go, from the neighbors. So I'm okay with it.
Mr. Boucher?
I support the special exception. And as far as the variance goes, yes, it's a kind of a big jump. But again, you look at this, at the situation, this, how they're situating the addition. So it's going to be mostly hidden by the garage. So I think that you'd really have to really drive around the house or try to get views from all locations to really get really what it is. So yes, I do get what you're saying. And my, my question was, when I looked at this, was whether or not there was some accessibility issues and why it was designed this way. So we confirmed that. So I completely understand that. So again, I think that visually, yes, the number is big, but I don't think you really would discern that from looking from the front of the house, side of the house. I think you'd really have to really understand what's going on there. So, you know, I would, I would support it. And it is true, as was stated by both my other colleagues, that the neighborhood does have some larger homes in there. So I think it kind of fits right into, to that neighborhood. So I would support the variance and the special exception.
Thanks. As I mentioned, I'm in support of the special exception. I am struggling with the square footage for what I stated, but that's why there's four of us, which fills five, but four a night. And Ms. Vitale, would you like to make some motions?
Sure. Just a minute, I'm just checking some. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for Susan Murphy. The address is 5 Salmon Brook Drive. Description is requesting the following: A special exception to allow an accessory in-law dwelling. And the second one will be the variance to exceed maximum area of accessory dwelling. 750 square feet is allowed. 896 square feet are proposed. I'm going to do the variance first. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved in some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. In this case, there is an increase over the 750 to 896 square feet. It'll be an addition to the back of the home. It fits in with the area. They can't put it in another area of the house. There's five children. It's a large family. And so they're, they're building it onto the back of the home. The variance is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. It should not be contrary to the public interest. There's been no testimony in opposition. Substantial justice would be served. I'm making a motion to approve that variance.
All right, we have a motion to approve the variance on the table. Is there a second to the motion? Mr. Welch is seconded. Any discussion on the motion? So a show of hands in favor, in favor to approve the variance is three, and opposed is myself. So that motion carries. And would you like to continue on with the special exception?
Okay, special exception. Again, I make a motion to approve the special exception. The owner is Susan Murphy, 5 Salmon Brook Drive, requesting the following: The special exception to allow an accessory dwelling, in-law dwelling unit. It's listed in the table of uses. I believe it's 19032. Will not create undue traffic congestion, unduly impair the pedestrian's safety. There's been no, no testimony against that, but we're not really increasing the size of the household more than one individual. Will not overload public water drainage sewer or other municipal systems. Special regulations will be fulfilled. We didn't really address that, but they, the applicant, I believe, has, has seen those. Will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health morals or welfare of the residents. So I make a motion to approve this special exception.
Motion on the table to approve the special exception. I'll second that. Discussion on the motion. I guess that's a good point. We didn't specifically address the nine criteria, although they're written. Maybe just, maybe I could just, would you mind if I reopen the...
Not at all.
Public hearing. So I make a motion to reopen the public hearing, seconded by you. All in favor. Mr. Bennett, could I indulge you to come back to the microphone? And, there's nine criteria for a special exception. I know you're the contractor, but I, if you could take a brief look at that, feel free to throw your reading glasses on. I don't think you're going to find any surprises in there, but I certainly, that one about the covenant, filing a covenant, the owners there, 5 Salmon Brook Drive, will need to do that. And I guess I'm looking for your saying that, yes, this application meets that, and also that you will inform the homeowners of that nine criteria.
Yes, it does, and I will. I'll pass this along to Susan when we meet.
Great. You can have a seat again, and I'll close the public hearing and reopen the public meeting. Thank you for that. So we have a motion on the table to approve, seconded by me. Any other discussion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor. So that's unanimous. So Mr. Bennett, your application is approved. And just remember, there's that 30-day window of appeal. So you can pull your permits tomorrow, but I would exercise caution in that 30 days, because if, if a rehearing request came in, even if you poured concrete, it doesn't affect our decision, and it may be stayed. So I exercise, I'd advise caution in that. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number nine. Moving right on along, I'd like to open the public hearing on case number 10. The owner is Noria Energy Corporation. The applicant, care of Bob Richard. The applicant, oh, I'm sorry, that's the applicant. The owner is GTYMANH Leasing. The address is 7 Harris Road. The request is a special exception to work within the 75-foot prime wetland buffer of Salmon Brook to construct 160-square-foot storage building addition within an existed landscape area adjacent to the existing car wash. It's in the HB zone. Good evening. And first, I would have liked to accommodate your request to speed it up, but I really like to stick to the agenda as posted, because we have other people patiently waiting in the audience.
I understand, Mr. Chairman. It is no problem. If it would have been a real problem for me, I would have made you known, and I'm sure that you would accommodate.
Thank you.
Not a problem. For the record, Mr. Chairman, my name is Jerry Prunier. I'm an attorney with offices at 20 Trafalgar Square here this evening, representing the applicant. As indicated by the notice, this is the construction of a 160-square-foot building on already-developed area. The, it was thought that because there was, it was within the wetland setbacks, it would be, to be better if we went through the process, even though we don't think we had to, but we did. We went to the Conservation Commission, presented them with the, our proposal, along with the nine conditions that a special exception is subject to. They approved the, our application with one condition, and that's that we try to maintain some cleanliness in the brook, which we agreed to do. And we agreed to that condition, to continue with that condition. And we have nothing else. It's just a small storage shed.
I think the application speaks for itself. And let's see if there's any questions for you. Any questions for us? If we do, Mr. Boucher?
It's late, it's late.
I know, it's a, I'm just curious what the storage shed is. What are they storing?
Pardon?
What are they storing? Is it stuff for the car wash?
Same, no, no. Same stuff that they sell in the store. Bottled water, tonic.
And I'm just curious what the rehab of the car wash, I don't know if they lost their storage in that building area?
No.
No? Okay. Just curious.
Ms. Vitale?
Is this because they'll have the more storage now than what they currently have? Will there be more deliveries to this property?
Less.
Less deliveries.
Less deliveries. I mean, I, that's why they want to do it. But for me to come and tell you that this is going to make a big difference on the traffic flow, I don't have, I can't do that. But it's going to be less.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, we're all set. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of the proposed storage shed at 7 Harris Road? Anyone with questions, concerns, opposition? Questions, concerns? I'm not seeing any, so I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the matter? Mr. Welch, would you like to kick it off?
Yeah, I don't have any issues with it. You know, the Conservation Committee approved it, with one exception, and I'm good.
All right, thank you. Ms. Vitale?
I guess the bonus is it'll clean up a little bit of the area. It's not going to add to increased traffic at the, at the site. So I'll be in favor of it.
Mr. Boucher?
I support the application.
I do. I support it as well. I mean, I think that, you know, this business has been there long before the wetlands were in effect, and it's, you know, squeezed in there. And, you know, I, there's a need there for it. It really doesn't impact the wetlands, because it's within the 75-foot, but it's up and over, and there's a lot of concrete and asphalt closer. So... So it does have to come to us by law, but I agree with the Conservation Commission and their stipulation. I guess I'll make a motion for this. I'll make a motion on behalf of G T Y M A N H Leasing. It's the owner. The applicant is Noria Energy Corp. And again, the request is to work within a seventy-five-foot prime wetland buffer of Salmon Brook to construct a hundred and sixty-foot storage building addition within the existing landscape area adjacent to the car wash. This use is listed in the table of uses. The board finds there's no impact to traffic congestion or pedestrian's safety for this storage. Said there's no impact for public water drainage sewer or other municipal system. The special regulations are fulfilled. It'll not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood. It's pretty much going to be a small shed in a busy service station, and I think the board finds that there's no negative impact from that to the wetlands. The applicant has agreed to the one stipulation, which the board finds will help clean up the wetlands. So I make a motion to approve as presented. Is there a second to the motion? Ms. Vitale? Any discussion on the motion?
So we just mentioned that at the September fifth meeting, the concom, right?
That's a great point. I will include the minutes from the Conservation Commission on this matter, and also their September fifth, twenty seventeen approval, with the one criteria that the applicant has stated they will adhere to. So thank you for clarifying that, that that's added to the record. Any other discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor. So that's approved, so good luck with your storage shed.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, I'd like to open the public hearing on case number eleven. The owners are Fred Richard Bulow, Jr. and Allison Azamakopoulos. The address is two Old Balcon Farm Drive. The request is a variance to encroach eighteen feet into the twenty-foot required frontyard setback to construct a ten-by-sixteen shed. Who is here to present? Hi, good evening. If you'd like to come to the microphone and walk us through your application. Actually, you can grab that bar and lift it up, or just hold it if you want.
I'm fine like this.
I think that might be a little easier for yourself.
So, good evening. My name is Rich Bulow. I'm an owner, one of the owners of the property. I bought the house about a year ago. It's a beautiful development we live in, and we've been trying to figure out a place for a shed to, within the lot size that we have. We have a fairly big lot. Unfortunately, the backyard of the lot is very small. Too small to reasonably fit the shed into that area of the lot. The issue is that there is a twelve-to-fourteen degree grade after about ten foot off the back of my deck, and then it goes into a wooded area. So there's no real level ground in the backyard area to support the shed. And as you see in the lot plan in the application, it fans out in the front fairly wide for us to be able to put a shed in that area. Unfortunately, we're encroaching on the setback for that location. But it is still twelve feet off of the road, so from our perspective, it is a cul-de-sac we live on, and we certainly don't want to cause safety issues. So we want to make sure that certainly any traffic coming in would not be blocked by the shed, and we believe that it's not violating any safety issues. We also, I'm not building a shed. I have it built by Reed's Ferry. It's going to match the house with siding and a cupola, so it's going to be a very nice shed to make sure that it maintains the spirit of the neighborhood and not to detract from the value of adjacent homes that we neighbor in that area. We are also abiding by the butter setback requirements of our adjacent neighbor, so the shed is going to be six feet from that. The variance is in the front setback. I think I've covered pretty much what I wanted to say.
All right, let's see. Any questions, Mr. Bulow? I guess I just have one question. You kind of hit the nail on the head. First of all, I agree, it's a nice-looking shed. Those Reed's Ferry's are about as good as they come. I wish mine was a Reed's Ferry. My neighbor just got one, and it's great. But I was wondering, when I saw the application, like, oh, man, why couldn't that go in the backyard? And when I sightwalked, it looked like it went up, and I figured there was a topographical challenge for you.
Yeah, the other thing, I have been, I'm looking to put a retaining wall back there, because I really would have liked the shed back there, but the cost of, it's becoming a realization that there's a lot of cost in getting retaining wall, and then leveling, and taking that back to a point where I could put the shed back there.
Yeah.
Too much cost that I'm going to be able to afford.
Yeah. Well, I guess, you know, we had two cases tonight on old Balcon Farm Drive. I never knew the street existed, and then I'm like, and it's a nice little street.
Beautiful neighborhood.
I used to live nearby and still never knew it was there. And that's a good way to be, when your neighbors don't know your street's there, because you probably don't get a lot of traffic. You know, but I have to say, it's a beautiful little street, but I'm, you know, my sense is the shed is going to look kind of like a, you know, right out there in front. I feel it's out of character, so I guess I'm just struggling with the application, and needed to, you know, just ask the question, like, geez, what could or would it take to have it in the back, you know? And I know you've explained it. I didn't know if it was maybe a little closer to the house. Could there not be such a big cut-in or something? Or, you know, was there any possibility to put it back there, or just?
Yeah, there is still a possibility. I've got a quote, I'm working with a guy from Distinctive Stone right now, looking at, trying to S-curve. If you were to look in the back to the left, we think that there may be enough room in the back there to do more of a retaining wall with an S, with a deeper cut into it.
Yeah.
And if I'm able to do that, then I'd rather put it there.
Yeah. Well, I guess, just my thoughts on the matter. I didn't know if anybody else had anything else. I guess we'll just, any other questions? Mr. Boucher does for you. You might want to lift that, or just pull that out again, because that way-
Just on the same vein as Mr. Correa was asking, and again, I'm not picking apart your plan. It's what you're here, it's what you're applying for, it's what you want. No matter what you do with the shed in that general location, you're going to be in that setback a little bit, but was there any thoughts of just moving the shed a little bit closer to the garage, you know, in the same, in the front, or the front to the side, but moving it up the property line a little bit?
Yeah, so one of the things that I want to be, yes, there was. What I'm also wanting to do is extend the garage or the driveway further around the door, where I can now store the trash outside of my garage, because in the summer, it kind of reeks in the garage. So I'm actually looking at adding a little more width to the driveway in that area that's going to cause even more space to be taken up, so I can get my trash out of my garage and against the side of the house.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Bulow?
Just one more.
We've got another one.
Sorry, and it's just semantics. I am assuming that the garage door, the double door, whatever, the entrance, the main door is going to be facing the rear of the property, right?
Yes.
So aesthetically, they'll drive by, and they'll just see the front, the two windows of that, like, front door.
With the flower with the-
Right, right.
With the shutters will be-
Correct.
In the front.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Vitale?
Have you mentioned it to any of the neighbors, or any of the neighbors come by and talk to you about it at this point?
I haven't mentioned the shed. I've mentioned retaining walls to a couple of neighbors. I may, you know, depending on my luck with finding a reasonable cost, I may reach out, you know, to them as well, but, you know, I'm hopeful at some point I'll be able to get something reasonable to extend and level the backyard, because right now, there's really nothing. As you probably saw, we're probably about six foot off the back.
All right, any other questions? I think we're all set. You can have a seat, and we'll see. Was there anybody else to speak in favor of this proposed shed at five Balcon Farm, two Balcon Farm Drive? Anybody with questions or concerns? We have a, sir, if you'd like to come up and give us your name and address, and let us know what's on your mind?
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Breen. I live at one hundred and five Flintlock Drive. My name is spelled B as in Boston, R E E N. My property abuts Mr. Bulow's, and I'm going to start off by saying it's his land, he can build a shed. I do have a couple of concerns, though. The first concern is the basement of my house, the whole neighborhood is very hilly. And, you know, he spoke about the grade in his yard. I have just as much, if not more, of a grade in my yard, so I can sympathize with him there. With that said, my basement is the lowest point of the whole neighborhood, and every March, we get at least an inch of water. Up to, the worst time we had flooding, it was ten inches. Knocked our sun pump out, knocked our furnace out, knocked our hot water heater out. My concern with that is, will this shed affect the winter drainage of the neighborhood? And my second concern is, with all the sloping that goes on in the property, even though, I don't know where he intends to put the shed, because I didn't see the plans, but I have a good idea, just from the descriptions that he was saying. There is still some slight sloping that goes on where I think he wants to put it. How is that going to be leveled?
Okay.
Those are my concerns.
So Mr. Falk is going to give you a chance, you could take a minute to get oriented to see what he's thinking of doing. So you see where he's proposing it, yeah?
Yeah, that's exactly where I thought he was going to be putting it.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks for coming. So your question was about the runoff. You're concerned about getting more water in your basement.
More water in the basement, and how is he going to, how is that area where he's going to put the shed going to be leveled? Are they going to need to blast anything out of there, or are they just going to be able to flatten it out with digging and construction equipment, or something else?
All right, we'll get some answers for you. Thank you for coming. Was there anybody else with questions or concerns?
Correa, I have a question.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Breen? We have a question for you. Mr. Boucher does, I missed that. If you could come back to the mic, so we get every word, sorry about that.
The only question I have is, you were talking about concerns of the existing location of the shed. If the applicant was able to do some leveling or work in the rear of the property, would you be even more concerned about any issues that you would have affecting your property? So if he was able to put that shed in the back, and what he's saying is, is that he's looking at creating a retaining wall, and obviously, there must be some digging out and leveling a little bit, would you be more concerned, or less concerned, or indifferent to where it goes?
Concerns would probably be about the same. As far as leveling off the slope, it all depends on how that's going to be done. Is that going to be blasted out? Is that going to be dug out? If it's going to be blasted out, then I might have an issue with that.
All right, thank you.
All right, you can have a seat. Was there anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition? Once, twice? Did you have, was your hand in the air, sir, in the back? No?
On his neighbor.
Okay, did you have any, anything? Okay.
He's in the other position, he's going to be able to put the shed, so.
All right, so we, Mr. Bulow, yeah, Bulow, could you come back to the mic? The questions, I, let me just try, I think if you situate the shed where you're proposing, I think you're just going to have Reed's Ferry level it with some cinder blocks, or are you going to put a-
Actually, I'm going to put some stone, a crushed stone foundation for drainage, because I don't want dry rot coming up through, you know, and dry rotting the wood frame that will be supporting the shed.
Okay, so that would be your plan, if it's situated where you're proposing now?
Yeah, and the land that the shed is going to be located on is relatively flat.
Okay. And if you, again, what you said is, if you were to do it in the back, that would be like a cutout retain-
That would be a cutout, and I would have, and I would alter, to the gentleman's concern, I would need to alter the grade to be able to support a shed in that area.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Ann, we have a question for you.
So again, just on the shed and location, if there was any, is there any opportunity to move the current location of the shed? So as I was speaking before, you know, and you explained it, you're going to put in, your plan is to put in some more driveway to be able to store your trash outside.
Yes.
If, is there any movement in that shed, whether it's a foot, two feet, three feet, or four feet?
Yep.
And what would that be? Because that is something that the board can consider. So you have an application here that you're looking for this encroachment.
Yep.
We can consider less encroachment as a way to prove it. So sometimes that's done, you know, because of different reasons, maybe some members feel a bit more comfortable, less encroachment, and it's still achieves what you want, but it's less. So I'm asking you, right now, you're looking for the, you're looking for eighteen feet into the twenty-foot required front side of the back. What would be the minimum, what would be the minimum amount of-
Of encroachment, sure.
Encroachment.
No, that's a good question. So when I initially thought of how the shed would be situated, I was actually looking at it coming off, there's, as you, there's a dilapidated fence that I abut to, that I was, I was looking to come off that fence. So I can come further back, between four to six feet, to reduce encroachment from eighteen to fourteen, or around that.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
I understand.
To a point where, you know, it's going to be a little, because I'm going to have to put a small retaining wall to, there's still a slope from my driveway down to the shed, and I'm going to need to build that up. So there's going to be at least a two-foot retaining wall that's need to be built to pave that area, so it's going to take some of that space that you may think I could put the shed further back away.
All right. So your testimony is, and again, it's going to be, for me, I'm going to consider it, and I will bring it up in our next session, but, so your testimony would be that you could live with, or you would be okay with a fourteen-foot encroachment instead of eighteen?
Yes.
And that would not change, now again, that would, and again, I just want you to be clear that their side setback would still be the same?
Correct.
Okay.
I'd have to remove, I'd have to remove some, there's a couple of rows of shirn bushes, and, you know, there's some landscaping that needs, would need to happen there.
Okay, so, and again, I'm not forcing you to that, I just want you to feel comfortable with that, you know? And if you don't feel comfortable with it, then tell us, we won't consider it.
No, no, I really don't, I don't want to go any further forward than I really have to. Right? It's a balance between, I want it aesthetically pleasing, because, like I said, it's a beautiful neighborhood, and I don't want to detract at all from that. So there's a balance there, and I roughed it out to the eighteen feet, but I believe I should be able to come a little further in without taking away from what I want to do with my driveway expansion.
Okay, so your testimony is that you can, you can remove another four feet of that, and you'll be comfortable?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I think we're all set. Mr. Breen, you've been following along. Did you have any follow-up questions or concerns with what you've heard, or?
Still concerned about the drainage.
Drainage, okay. Actually, could you, could you, could you come back to the mic, because we'd like to get- Actually, could you, could you, could you come back to the mic 'cause we'd like to get that on the microphone? And again, this is Mr. Breen from, where on Flintlock?
One oh five.
One oh five, okay, thank you.
Yeah, he's addressed my concern about leveling the land, so I don't have a problem with that anymore, but I'm still concerned about the drainage. Like I said, it's sloopy. Everything flows into our yard and into our basement. There's a brook across the street as well from him. And I just wanted, I just want reassurances that it isn't gonna make my basement take on even more water than it already does.
All right, thank you. I'd like to close the public hearing and, wait? Yes, we're done. We've had.
Yeah, right, so we went through the.
We've exhausted it all.
Yeah, okay.
So close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, would you like to kick it off?
Sure. Like you, I did a site drive. I didn't walk. I drove.
I drove. I didn't walk. Too hilly to walk there.
You do a lot of walking. So I, I understand what the topography is and, you know, coming in from, from, coming into there, taking a left into there, I could see the properties and I can see exactly what the challenge was. And honestly, I was looking and I'm like, you know, I know how they fabricate the sheds to get them back there, but I'm saying there's no way you would even get a, you know, sometimes they move them already built and so, but regardless. But, so there's challenges in the back of property. So I can see where there's some special conditions that exist, you know, that currently exist in, with the property itself. So of course, I'm not, I mean, you know, it's not exciting to see a shed so close to the street. But when I got there and looked at the property, I was looking at the drawing again. I'm going, oh yeah, that's right. There's a city right away there that, you know, that's technically his property. But, you know, it's definitely where the payment ends and, but unfortunately, the property line is in further. So with that, that's why I asked the question whether or not we could move the shed or he would be willing to move the shed further up. So again, maybe not something that I would wanna do, but I can see we're kind of, it's kind of maybe the only place to put it. So I wasn't really comfortable with the eighteen-foot incursion, but I think if we go to fourteen, I know it's maybe minimal, but it's four feet. But don't forget, you know, we're measuring off the point of the shed, so it gets a little less, you know, as we're looking at the back, you know, the corner side, right? So, you know, again, I think when we start looking at the distance, you know, from, from the actual payment, and I know it's not from the actual property line to payment, I think it becomes a little less like it's, like stuck right on the edge of the property and there's the roadway. So that's my opinion.
Thanks. Ms. Vitale?
I wouldn't have any problem about requiring, changing it that four feet. I don't think you'll change the, you know, it's still gonna be there at the front, but it is gonna be, you know, something's looking at the landscape. Still be the side yard setback that's being requested. So I would, I would be comfortable with that requirement. It sounded like the applicant would be too.
Mr. Wolf?
Yeah, initially I was, I was concerned when I, when I drove by the other day. But I think after hearing my colleagues up here, I think the fourteen-foot encroachment is a better option.
Thank you. My thoughts, like I mentioned, I was concerned with it being out in front that much 'cause I, I feel it'll, when it's there, it'll be very predominant and out of character. I'm uncomfortable with that. So pulling it back, I appreciate you suggesting that very much, I think, so to speak. Because what you're saying is fourteen feet, it would be further back, right? I mean, a thought that comes to my mind is like, right now, the six-foot incursion on the side yard or, would that be rear yard or side yard?
It's twenty in the front and six on the side or rear.
So you, so you mean the side?
Side yard. So it's, I don't wanna advocate for violating the side yard setback, but if that were less, I think they could pull the shed back a lot more from the street. And, but it's, I'm uncomfortable here saying, well, let's, because that would also maybe be a re-advertising. But I guess I'm struggling to support the application. And we could try to move forward with maybe a motion as you're suggesting. One thing I was thinking was perhaps a table for the applicant to see what, if he moved it maybe even to the side yard or further back from the street, then what would he actually be asking for or needing? And there was also the thought of, he was actively exploring the capability of cutting in somewhat to the back because I think either of those would be better than what's here, but that's where I'm at. And I guess I just wanted to speak to the drainage situation. I'm feeling that if, granted, the neighborhood was built out and Mr. Breen has a problem on hand, which is his basement floods on occasion. And you could say that any impervious surface, probably anywhere in the watershed, you could make an argument might add to, you know, exacerbate his problem. I'm not sure if I'd be willing to say that nobody in the watershed or even this fellow next door here couldn't add any amenity because of the problem at Mr. Breen's house. So while I empathize with that, I guess, I look at if any shed or anything is added there. I mean, I'm not a civil engineer. I don't know if it's really gonna make a significant impact, but perhaps there'd be some, you know, less infiltration in the land. But I don't know if that, if, if Mr. Breen's problem rises to the point of where any abutter or person nearby couldn't enjoy, you know, a moderate-sized shed. I just wanted to not ignore Mr. Breen's issue. But I guess I'm struggling to not permit something because he's got, got a water problem. I didn't know how you felt about that.
Oh, you know, you could, you could park a, you know, that Mr. Breen could have a Class C or whatever camper, right? The big rooftop, bigger than the Squidward chair and park there nine months a year, right? It would do kind of the same thing, right? Type, you know, so, so, so I do agree with you, you know? But I think that the applicant's heard the abutters concern and I think that when he goes and constructs and does all that work, I think that'll be in his mind that, you know, I'm gonna make sure that I'm not pushing water away, you know? That I'm taking care of it here.
Well, I think, you know, you three are, you know, I think I'm hearing you're okay with a fourteen-foot setback and if you wanna proceed with that.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
All right. No, I can't. We're not, not at this point.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Fred Richard Bulow and Allison. Forgive me if I mispronounce this, Asmecopulus? Sorry, thank you. Two old Balcon Farm Road. They're requesting a variance to encroach. We are, we are mending the variance to, from eighteen feet to fourteen feet as we allow to do. It's less than an incursion. So we are requesting a variance, we are requesting, they are requesting a variance to encroach fourteen feet into the twenty-foot required front, yeah, setback to construct a ten-by-sixteen shed. It is in the R-nine zone and it is code section one ninety dash thirty-one. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property given the special conditions of the property. We discussed and have, have testimony that the rear of the property has a grate to it and a wooded area and it would be difficult at best to level and situate a shed in the, in the rear of the property. The property has also somewhat of a unique shape where it's more of a triangular shape and the house just sits within its setbacks. The benefit, and then we found that the benefits offered by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, as I just discussed, other than an area variance. It is within the spare and intended audience. It will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We had no testimony for or against that. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served.
So we have a motion on the table to approve that adjustment, seconded by Ms. Vitale. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion. Show of hands in favor of the motion is three and opposed is myself. So that motion carries. And good luck with your shed. With that, I'll close the public meeting. We good to keep going?
Just give me one second.
Mr. Boucher has a little note-taking to do here. So while we're up here talking, Mr. Boucher is busy writing and keeping the written record. An unsung hero working away, getting writer's cramp over there. All right. I'd like to open the public hearing in case number twelve. The owner is Lang and Sons LLC. The applicant, Lucinda Evans. The address is one Charlotte Street. The first request is a special exception to allow an in-home child daycare for twelve children. And number two is a variance to allow an in-home child care in a building that is a two-family dwelling with a separate landscape office use. And the third request is to exceed maximum size of childcare facility. Four hundred and twenty square feet is allowed. Five hundred and forty square feet is proposed. Who is here to present this application? Hi, if you'd like to come to the microphone and, sorry about the late night, but it was the luck of the draw that you ended up number twelve of thirteen, so thanks for your patience. Well, look at that. You've only got us and a very small audience, so just forget the TV camera and. Would you like to walk us through your application?
Sure, I'll keep it nicely short. I know it's very late. My name is Lucinda Evans. I live at number one Charlotte Street. I'm here to request the approval of a special exception used to start an in-home daycare for a maximum of twelve children. And the granting of the variance to allow this zone in a two-family dwelling and in a room that is larger than the size of the four-twenty square feet. The house in question belonged to my family for over sixty-five years. It is where my mother and all six of her siblings grew up, as well as numerous children. My family has since turned the house into a two-family dwelling to accommodate the family's varying needs. The two apartments were separated by a door on the ground floor hallway, so it's easy to open. My own family now occupies the entire house and we wish to turn the large front room on the ground floor into a space for daycare. It is an existing room that has been part of the house for sixteen years. The room measures five hundred and forty square feet in total and it's a beautiful, bright room with access to the garden. The intended hours of operation are Monday through Friday with staggered drop-offs in the morning and pickups in the afternoon. All parking for the drop-off and pickup is off-road and away from the street, ensuring the safety of the children and the community. There is ten parking spaces in all with more room to add if we need to, through turning around and everything like that. So creating no impact on existing traffic. The daycare would sit on the fringe of a well-established commercial area with such businesses as the flower outlet, Birchwood Mashua, the pain relief center, two gas stations, and the Rite Aid, just to name a few. The backside of the property abuts directly onto Charlotte Avenue Elementary School where all my aunts and uncles and a number of my cousins went to school. As for a little bit about myself, I have a degree in psychology from, with a special focus in cognitive development from UNC Chapel Hill. I have over nineteen years' experience working with children with an extensive background in early childhood education and I have continued to expand my education by attending workshops and trainings. I have taught classes for three international child and youth conferences. I am a certified CPR and first aid instructor through the Red Cross. And for the last nine years, I have been a pre-K teacher for the United States Air Force, in which time I worked with the teaching strategy staff to create and implement the new creative curriculum into the classrooms at the child development centers on RAF Lake of England, UK, and developing now a very successful pre-K program at Anson Air Force Base. My hope is that the daycare will become an intrinsic part of the neighborhood and add value to the community by adding a service. I have already received overwhelming support from the neighbors. They have been very kind to me. And I believe I meet all the requirements for the five criteria. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Evans? I guess I have a question for you. Are you familiar with the special conditions for a childcare facility? I don't know if Mr. Falk maybe has ticked through these. Have you seen these before? Mr. Boucher is gonna take a copy of that and you could just, you could take a look at those. And while you're looking at that, the first one is a child daycare facility shall be subordinate to a single-family detached dwelling. Well, that's part of what your request is. It's, the variance is for that. So that's the variance you're requesting. The maximum capacity is twelve, which is what you're asking for. So I guess I'm actually gonna ask this to Mr. Falk. Were, do they meet number three?
Yep, lot is fine. Lot, it's actually a pretty good-sized lot, so they meet that.
Yeah, okay.
They're on the size that's something else.
Okay, and by testimony, there's onsite parking there. It looks like a pretty big parking lot. It almost goes down. I couldn't see how far it went.
It keeps going up and around.
And I think by your design, the outdoor activity is in the back?
It is, yeah, all in the back away from the street. There's a lovely hedge that blocks from the roads and you can't see it. And we have the inner six that.
Okay, and then number six is at about a sign not exceeding one square foot in size? Is your testimony, that's what you're, you wouldn't exceed that signage size?
No, I was wondering if I should maybe ask for a variance to add a little sign? Because if you've seen the property, there's this lovely little sort of built-in garden up front, the little walled garden. I'm about to put a sign there. From what I understand, this, this sign has to be on the actual property?
Yeah, it's gotta be on the building.
It has to be on the building?
On, on the building. I don't know if we'd want to go there at this time because that's a whole separate request.
Okay.
What, what, what you're, should this be approved, you're permitted a one-square-foot sign in size on the main structure? And if you wanted more than that, you could, you're always free to ask on a separate application. But it couldn't be added to this because it's not advertised or anything. So I think what we're saying is these six criteria you're, you're adhering to with the exception of the single family, which is what we're discussing here with the variance. All right, thank you for clarifying that. Did anybody have any questions for the applicant? All right. And again, you've spoken with the neighbors and you're saying that they're all fine with it?
Yeah, I mean, they're very supportive.
Okay.
One neighbor did ask about parking, but luckily I get to assure her that there's plenty of parking on the street.
Great, well, thanks for checking with the neighbors. It's always comforting to know that there's no issues there. All right, I don't think we have any other questions. You could have a seat. Was there anybody else to speak in favor? All right, hi. If you could come to the mic and give us your name and address and let us know what your testimony is?
Hello, my name is Iona Evans. My address is six eighty Portsmouth Ave, Greenland, New Hampshire. I am Lucinda Evans's sister. I'm also an attorney and I represent the owners and my whole entire family that all grew up in this house. And they, I wanted to convey how supportive they are. And they, I wanted to convey how supportive they are. And also today, when I came to pick up my sister, two neighbors came over and asked about this project, and they were overjoyed that she was going to put this daycare in there. They said there was a real need. One of the people had just retired from teaching, and they were very, very grateful that this project was going in, so I wanted to share that with you today. Thank you.
Well, thanks for sharing that with us, Ms. Evans. Were there any questions for Ms. Evans? We're all set. Thanks. There's nobody else, sir? I think you're here for the next case. All right, so you could have a seat. There's, so there's no opposition we have on record, so I'd like to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Mr. Boucher?
I support the application. Again, you know, it's a pretty, it's a very large lot. I think it fits right in. I don't see, you know, as I looked, you know, I was trying to see where the parking was, and I realized it was in the back. And so, you know, again, no impact to the roadway, you know. We know that that gets busy there sometimes, so that was a concern, and then everything else looks good to me. You know, the two-family thing, obviously testimony was it used to be a single family and it had been split up, but it's being used now as a, well, they're using it, it's just one family living there. But, you know, again, I don't have any issues with that. I don't see, there's any reason to deny it because of that.
Sure.
So I'm supportive of the application as it stands.
All right, maybe I'll jump in next. I'm supportive of it also. I mean, I was a little concerned at first about the 12 children, but the applicant seems to have a pretty extensive, you know, background in this sort of business, and that put my mind, that puts my mind at ease about that, so I'm comfortable with that. I mean, prior to the testimony, I was, you know, a bit concerned about the two-family, but it's owned by the same family, you know, and it's one thing where there's an absentee landlord, because maybe what type of tenant might come in might be conflicting with the childcare facility, but I have no concern that anything like that would happen here. It's all controlled essentially by the same family. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with that in this case, so I'm supportive of it. That's where I'm at. Ms. Vitale?
I support the application also, and I want to mention for the record that they're exceeding the maximum size of the childcare facility, but part of the reasons for that is that's the size of the room that it's going into, as per testimony.
Good point. Thank you for bringing that up, that that is a special condition, that I think it has merit myself, that there's already an existing facility or part of the facility that's 540 square feet. So thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Welch?
I support the application. I agree with the comments that have been made. I think, you know, the concern that I had was the parking, but when I drove by, it was very easy to kind of peek my head around the corner and see that it was out back. And I like the fact that there's plenty of space in the back, too, so.
I guess one other thing I wanted to get on the record is, you know, partly we're here because it's in the residential zone, but as the applicant mentioned, there's businesses all around abutting this and the school on the other side, and that is a special condition of the site, which I think, you know, favors, you know, the approval of this, because there's so many businesses right up to this. Mind if I make a motion? I guess I'll kick off first with the variance. And I'll first make a motion to approve the variance to allow an in-home childcare building, childcare facility in a building that is a two-family dwelling with a separate landscape office use. This variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property as a daycare. The board finds it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance to allow this daycare within the structure that's a two-family dwelling with a separate landscape office use. I think the board finds that since the, the landscape office use is essentially part of the same family, there's no issue or concern with the childcare facility. I think the board finds that this proposal will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We haven't had any professional testimony, but it's our sense that a well-functioning daycare will have no impact, and we find it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is served. So I make a motion to approve an in-home child daycare in a building that is a two-family dwelling. Is that seconded by Ms. Vitale? Okay, I was gonna, let me throw that in the same motion. So thank you. So I'm going to add to that motion the variance to exceed the maximum size of a childcare facility. Our code permits 420 square feet. What's proposed is 540 square feet, and I think the board finds that the special condition of this land, which is there's already a facility or portion of the building that's 540 square feet, and with the large size of the lot and the parking, that it is reasonable to allow a 540-square-foot proposal. So there's two variances here on the same motion for the two-family dwelling and the variance for the 540 square feet, and I make a motion to approve as presented. Is that seconded by Ms. Vitale? So we have a motion with a second for the two-family dwelling and the 540 square feet. Any discussion on that motion? Show of hands in favor. So that carries. And I'll continue on. I'll make a motion to approve the special exception to allow an in-home childcare, daycare for 12 children. Let me flip back to that page right here. This request is listed in the table of uses. Do you happen to remember what that is? 190-36. The board finds it will not create undue traffic congestion or undue impaired pedestrian safely, safety, particularly with the size of this lot and the parking that's off-street. Board finds it will have no impact on public water drainage, sewer, or other municipal system. The six special regulations by testimony are fulfilled by the applicant, and the board finds that it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, particularly because there's so many businesses located adjacent to this property. So I think the board finds that the special exception criteria is met, and I make a motion to approve the special exception as presented. Seconded by Ms. Vitale. Any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor of the motion. So that's passed. So congratulations. Your application is approved. Just remember, there's a 30-day window of appeal. If there's any questions on that, just give Mr. Falk a call, and we wish you good luck with your project. All right, have a good night. We good to keep going? All right. I'd like to open the public hearing on case number 13. The owners are Mr. Munusami and Sridharan. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. The address is 7 Snow Circle, Unit K1. The request is a variance to encroach 10 feet into the 20-foot minimum distance from one structure to another to replace a 5-by-10-and-a-half-foot deck with a 10-foot, 5-inch-by-12-foot deck in the RC zone. Hi, good evening. If you'd like to come to the microphone and just give us your name and address, and if you could touch on the five points of law about your request.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Uday Kumar Munusami. That's my wife's name, Paramala Shridharan. I have two children, Pooja and Pranav, and they are eight years and seven, six years old. So this is a deck was of 7 Snow Circle. So we have a very small deck of 10 by 5, so we like to increase at 10 by 10 by 12 inches as small as the neighbors. So thought it also have the good space to stay in the summer, the outside, since it was very small, where we can't stand, we can't put any grill on that one. So that's the request being made on that.
All right, well, let's see if we have any questions, because you do have, you know, more detailed written application here. Are there any questions for Mr. Munusami? Mr. Boucher has a question for you.
So just, just, just to verify that, I noticed that your neighbors have logisized decks. Right? So you're not looking to do anything that doesn't exist in other units next to you, right?
No.
Right, because it looks like the one right next to you has a logisized deck. And I, and as I looked, I saw some other ones that were larger. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess a question I have is, I'm assuming your deck is short. Yeah, I, you can see it from the pictures and when I walked, and as Mr. Boucher said, the others are much bigger. I'm just kind of guessing that you're, maybe yours was short so that, like, the landscapers or someone can get between the buildings. I guess where I'm going is, I didn't know if, if your deck was enlarged per your proposal. I don't see any problem that that could create, but is, is, I'd just rather hear from you that if, if your deck was enlarged to your proposal, that that wouldn't create any passing-through problems, you know, for your association or anything.
No, we have enough space on that one, the, both sides of my neighbors and my other neighbors on that.
Okay, and another question I have is, is this a condominium?
Yes, it's a condominium.
Okay. Okay.
That's where there has to be a 20-foot distance between buildings.
Okay, it's a planned residential development.
Yes.
And was there any notification to the, is there like an association or a group that...
Yes, there's eight, eight members of board, board, eight, and I sent the email to the board.
Okay.
And they got approved. And then once I got approved, then I came to the city to get approval on this.
Well, that really comforts me to hear that, because I didn't realize or see anything, and I was, and so your board of directors has approved your request?
Already they approved.
Okay. I appreciate that testimony. I didn't see that in here, and I was concerned without it, because I'd hate to approve something that your own board hadn't looked at, but your testimony is they've seen this, they've given it the thumbs up.
Yes, yeah, they already give.
Okay. My mind is at ease now. Any questions? I'm all set with my questions. You good? I think we're all set. You can have a seat. We have no opposition. Close the public hearing, open the public meeting. Ms. Vitale?
Definitely, in, you know, support it. It obviously, from the pictures and the look of it, it's in need of replacement. Others in the area have larger decks, so it won't be out of character with the other, with the other residences in the area, and...
All right, going clockwise. Mr. Welch?
Yeah, I support it. I mean, looking at the pictures, when I, when I drove by, it's, it's in line with all the other decks in the area, and as long as the condo association board of directors has approved it, I have no issue.
Mr. Boucher?
I, I support the application, and to your comment, you know, was one of the things is I was wondering if it was short, because for some reason, they needed some access back there, but I think even with the deck, you know, the full size, size of the next-door neighbor, you still can get a car back there, truck, so. And it looks like he's the only one that hasn't, he's the only one on that side that hasn't replaced the deck.
Yeah, yes, yeah. I'm thinking that it was probably short, because when the places were built, it came up, oh, my gosh, if we do a 10-footer, we're going to be within 20 feet, and nobody wanted to deal with it.
Right, yeah.
And then time goes by, and, but if the association's good with it...
Probably was cheaper to do it, too.
Maybe that, sure. And I think it's a fair request, because the size of the deck that's there is pretty minimal. So, you know, I don't think it's asking too much to match the abutters decks. Ms. Vitale, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application, and I'm sorry, I'm not very good at pronunciation.
Mr. Munusami. Munusami.
Munusami and...
Sridharan.
Sridharan. At 7 Snow Circle, Unit K1, they are requesting a variance to encroach 10 feet into the 20-foot minimum distance from one structure to another to replace a 5-foot-by-10-foot, 5-inch deck with a 10-foot, 5-inch-by-12-foot deck in the RC zone. This variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. In this case, the applicant has a, a small deck currently needing to be replaced. Their decks in the area are larger. He has been approved by his condo association board to, to have the larger deck, and all he had to do was get our approval here at the zoning board this evening. I believe this approval is within the spirit and intent of our ordinance. It will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. There has been no testimony, but I would say it will enhance the property values in the area. It's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served, so I motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Boucher. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor of the approval is unanimous. So your deck is approved. Good, we wish you good luck with your new deck. All right, have a good evening. All right. The other before us is, we have minutes from August 8th. However, the four people here with myself, Mr. Boucher, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Lionell. I don't know if by chance, Mr. Welch or Ms. Vitale, you've read through those minutes?
I, I can't, I can't stand them, but I haven't, I didn't like listen to the verbal or...
I think we'll just hold till, no action on those, and we'll pick it up when other members, you know, like Mr. Lionell and Shaw, are expected back at the next meeting. So we'll take no action on those. And do we have...
There is an agenda. It should be on your desk somewhere.
Got lost in my shuffle.
I have one.
Yeah, could I have one? So...
Everybody has, it should be on your desk. You got it?
So for the benefit of Mr. Welch, this is a, did you, you're all... Okay, well, let me just say that the last applicant, the question is, can they start? The answer is that you're free to pull your permit tomorrow. There is a 30-day window of appeal, and that's by law. So if, if a party of standing were to appeal our approval of your deck, for whatever reason, that, you know, it might be some reason, and if we were to approve that appeal, your approval would be stayed, and the case would start from ground zero, from the beginning. So it would be my advice, for what it's worth, that you might want to wait the 30 days to ensure there's not an appeal, but you have the right to start now. So I hope I've answered your question. It's your choice, and if you have any questions further on that, you could call Mr. Falk tomorrow. All right, have a good evening. So we have five items on the agenda, and what we look for, Mr. Welch, is, is any regional impact. And nobody could explain regional impact better than Mr. Falk.
How about that? Well, usually regional impact is going to be a use that's going to draw traffic and use from other municipalities, like, for example, an airport or a major sports stadium or a mall, something that's going to be big like that. Of course, most of the cases we have are single-family cases. They're not going to be regional impacts at all, so that's what we're, what we're really looking for. Cases that are on the city's borders or cases that are going to draw people from all over the region. So that, that's kind of what we're looking for. If you're not sure of any of these, these addresses, we can all discuss them. I'm sure one of us, or actually, I know where they all are, but we can go over all the addresses if you're not sure of any of them.
So I guess I have one question. The 107 Groton Road, is that near Pepperell or...
It's right on the border.
Oh, it is?
So that one, we would notify, I think it's Dunstable down there.
Dunstable, that would be.
It's the next town below. They're right on the city, on the state line, so we would notify the town of Dunstable for that one.
So on number four, Mr. Falk's testimony is that they're notifying the town of Dunstable. So on number four, Mr. Falk's testimony is that they're notifying the town of Dunstable because it's on the border of Dunstable. I'm not sure if, well, anyway, so we have that on record, that Dunstables be notified. As I look at the other addresses and the scope of the projects, I find no regional impact myself. I'd like to go around the table, so that's a no for me.
No, I don't see anything.
A no for Ms. Vitale on regional impact. A no for Mr. Welch, and a no for Mr. Boucher, so he can pick off on his list that we find no regional impact on the agenda for September 26th. Is there any other business to be brought before the board? Because if not, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn at 10 o'clock straight up.
In a second.
Seconded by Mr. Boucher. All in favor of the motion to adjourn? And so we are off. And then, Mr. Welch, if you push and hold the power button for a moment, and then release, it'll click off.[1760.01]